The council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada. Alderman Laspada is present. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is present. Alderman King. Alderman King is present. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is present. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is present. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is present. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is present. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is present. Alderman Zloski Garza. Alderman Zloski Garza is present. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is present. Alderman Cardness. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is present. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is present. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is present. Alderman Moore. Alderman Moore is present. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is present. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is present. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is present. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is present. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is present. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is present. Alderman Ticho Lopez. Alderman Ticho Lopez is present. Alderman Maldonado. Alderman Maldonado is present. Alderman Burnett. Alderman Burnett is present. Alderman Urban. Alderman Urban is present. Alderman Talafaro. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas is present. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is present. Alderman Waguspack. Alderman Waguspack is present. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin is present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Vegas. Alderman Vegas is present. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz is present. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Spisato is present. Alderman Nugent. Alderman Nugent is present. Alderman Vazquez. Alderman Vazquez is present. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley. Alderman Riley is present. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith is present. Alderman Tunny. Alderman Tunny is present. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is present. Alderman Kapelman. Alderman Kapelman is present. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is present. Alderman Ostroman. Alderman Ostroman is present. Alderman Haddon. Oh, Alderman Haddon is present. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is present. Alderman Taylor, are you present? Alderman Taylor is present. Alderman Talafaro is present. Any others I missed?
There are forty-seven members present. We have a quorum. Please rise, everyone, for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the Father.
And to the recall, let me just stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi David Wolkenfeld from Anshi Shalom Benai Israel. Rabbi, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an honor to lead you in prayer this morning. In the Orthodox synagogue, we have no microphones, so this is also a lot of fun for me. God on high, Jeremiah, your prophet taught us three things about prayer in the city when he delivered the prophecy. "D'ur shu et shlo ma'ira, shehig leiti et cham shama, v'ip alalu ba'adai el ha'shem ki b'shaloma yeyelachem shalom." Pray on behalf of the city to which I have sent you, and pray to God on its behalf or in its peace. You shall have peace. One, when you find yourself in a city, you need to pray. Problems on a scale of a city need prayer. The grandeur and awe evoked by the scale of a city should inspire prayer. The human diversity contained in a great city reflect the infinite creative capacity of God. Just stepping foot outside should create a powerful need to pray. Two, wherever you find yourself in the city, you were sent here by God. You may have come seeking an education or a job. You may have come here fleeing persecution or violence or poverty, but you were sent here because there is someone who needs you here, and there is someone here who needs you. Three, in its peace, you will find peace. We are connected to one another by webs of mutuality and interdependence. We all do better when we all do better. God on high, bless the voting members of the council and all the other officers of government in this city. Help them to deliberate and negotiate and guide the city to promote health and justice and safety and abundance. Let's the citizens of this city that we persevere and organize and cajole our elected representatives in a spirit of mutuality and motivated by the common good. May all our acts of citizenship and allyship be undertaken this year with the recognition that in its peace, you shall find peace. May we find inspiration now and forever in the beautiful mosaic of human diversity gathered together in this city. arouse our capacity to have empathy to the suffering of our neighbors. Fill our hearts with joy when our neighbors succeed. Give us the capacity to be generous with our time and with our possessions when confronted by a neighbor in need. Give us the opportunity, we pray, to take pride in our children's growth and learning and achievements, and may our children take pride in us. We may see us cooperate and collaborate on their behalf and on behalf of the common good. Our Father, a King, eradicate plague and violence, hunger, captivity, and destruction from this city and from this earth. Oh compassionate and gracious God, have compassion in us and in all your works. Let us say, amen. Thank you.
Next up, public comment. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Today's first speaker. Today's first speaker is John Friedman.
John Friedman is not here.
Our next speaker is Erica Nanatin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Erica Nanatin with Openland, and I am speaking before you today to ask that as we consider this budget, that funding that's already been set aside for improving the tree canopy of our city also include the inoculation of large healthy ash trees. The reason why this is important is because tree conservation is economically and environmentally superior to tree removal. Rather than removing the trees that we have, we should inoculate them to help them stay healthy. Urban ash conservation is less costly than removal, especially when the significant environmental and economic benefits of established trees are considered. The cost of inoculating an average-sized healthy ash tree in Chicago is one-tenth of the cost of removing it. One-tenth difference. So as we consider this budget, please keep in mind that our trees and our environment are directly connected to all of us. Thank you so much, Rabbi, for speaking on interdependence. Interdependence is definitely what our environment is for all of us. Losing healthy ash trees in Chicago by cutting them down rather than keeping them healthy will increase heat island and its association with health risks, especially for our elders. And the tree loss will actually spread the Emerald Ash Borer, which is the invasive species that does cause problems in these trees. Inoculation is a solution for this that is far less costly and will allow us to resolve this issue in a much more sustainable way. With the net loss of ten thousand street trees every year for the last ten years, it is imperative that Chicago maintains the dwindling sixteen percent tree canopy that currently exists for our health and the city's bottom line. Current science supports conservation via treatment as a sensible and effective tool for managing healthy ash trees in our urban setting. Openland supports the request to restore funding for ash tree inoculations in the 2022 City of Chicago budget. And we applaud the efforts of the community groups like Save Your Ash and Alder Person for their strong advocacy to drive this forward. Let us remember that budgets are also moral documents, and they are not just the opportunity to show our fiscal responsibility. It is both. So we can both show our fiscal responsibility by making sure we maintain inoculation of these trees rather than chopping them down, which will be far more expensive, but also allow our environment to thrive and provide shade and sun and oxygen and care for our environment for all Chicagoans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nanatin, for your comments. However, your time has expired.
Madam Clerk, John Friedman is now here.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Friedman.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot, Aldermen and Alder women. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Friedman. I am president of the North River Commission, vice president of the Hornet Park Advisory Council, and co-chair of the Save Your Ash Coalition. You recently heard my colleagues Nancy Wade and Openland address the importance of preserving forty-five thousand of the fifty thousand mature ash trees. That's the number still considered healthy enough to save that currently grace our city's streets and boulevards. That's over ten percent of the city tree canopy. I don't want to take more of your valuable time today, but I feel there's another important point to be made. We know that there are many critical issues to be addressed by you and this council, and tough budget decisions to be made over the next few weeks. Saving these trees shouldn't be one of them, especially when a decision to inoculate and preserve them, as opposed to having to remove and replace them, will free up tens of millions of budget dollars to be allocated elsewhere. As a forestry official testified last week, it would cost him only a hundred and twenty dollars to save a tree for three years, or fifteen hundred dollars to cut it down, remove it, and replace it. I don't see how this choice is even considered an either-or option. Multiply those numbers by forty-five thousand, and the savings are tremendous. Over sixty million dollars. People like trees. They want trees, and the bigger the better. How many of you strive for a nice sunny spot to park your car when a shady one is available? How many of you prefer to stroll down the street denuded of trees when out with your dog or child? It's in our DNA. It's human nature. People like and need trees. Mayor Lightfoot, in your initial budget address, you request funding to plant seventy-five thousand young trees over the next five years, and we strongly applaud your effort and foresight. What a great gift this is to our children, our grandchildren, and future generations of Chicagoans as these trees grow and mature. We are here today asking you to expand on that gift. They give us something to the current generations of Chicagoans. Keep us, help us keep these beautiful, mature trees around a little while longer while your new trees have a chance to grow and start generating the same environmental benefits currently provided by the trees we're asking you to save. Mayor Lightfoot, we request that you adopt the resolution calling on the mayor's administration to fully fund ash tree inoculation, which is supported by, I believe, forty of your council colleagues, and add a very modest line item to your 2022 budget that will preserve these forty-five thousand trees. My written statement has attachments and links to the science and financial facts that support our request. Please help us save our trees. We thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman, for your comments. Our next speaker is Nancy Wade.
Good morning. I'm here today on behalf of the members of the Save Your Ash Coalition Chicago to thank the Alders who have signed on to the resolution to fully fund ash tree inoculation, to encourage Alders who have not signed the resolution to do so, and to call on the mayor's administration to save your ash. My name is Nancy Wade, co-chair of the Save Your Ash Coalition Chicago. You've heard the facts on how this city can save sixty-nine million by treating the ash trees for Emerald Ash Borer. That's dollars. The bottom line is that treating the ash is far less expensive than letting them die and having to remove them. Treating them is good governance. You're aware that each of your wards has about a thousand ash trees, and it will be a nightmare once they all start dying at once in 2023 because many of them haven't been treated in five or more years. You know this can be prevented by inexpensive, environmentally safe, effective treatment. You also recognize there is more to city trees than facts and figures. There's also how people feel about their city and their neighborhood. Trees make people feel good. There is science behind that statement, but you don't need science to tell you that when you stand under a tree, you feel a little calmer, a little less stressed. The term "tree hugger" has a slightly silly sound to it, but that is what I am encouraging you to do. Hug a tree. Imagine you are one of the kids in this great city who doesn't have much of anything natural around them except the street trees. If you can't bring yourself to hug that tree, then put your hand on the trunk and pay attention for a moment about how it makes you feel. Trees make people feel better. Mayor Lightfoot and Alders, please do consider the facts and figures and good governance. In addition, please think about the kids in your ward and all over this city that we love, who will be seeing big, beautiful trees on their block die and be cut down very soon without treatment next year. The only trees many of them have ever seen. The trees that make them feel good. Then save those trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade, for your comments. Our next speaker is Melvin Barley.
Well, thank you. My name is Melvin Bailey. And this, today is an acknowledgement with, working with my government, far as the local government, with Department of Housing, getting through the process to build affordable housing. I'd like to thank Brian O'Donnell, also the commissioner and the mayor for working with us to make sure that this minority group got through the process of building affordable housing. And my job is to make sure that we can reduce violence by creating jobs. So, and it's an acknowledgement, soon as we pass city council, talking to my Alderman Emma Mitz, Jason Irvin, Walter Burnett, for allowing us to come into ward to build affordable housing. Ms. Stephanie Coleman, Pat Dow, all, once they acknowledged that we did pass city council to do affordable housing, all of them welcome us to come in their ward so we can reduce this crime. And also, this is another acknowledgement for your Department of Streets and Sand with Commissioner Cole, also the procurement office with Monica and Shana to making sure that the tree, the weed trimming contract that a women-owned business had do not fall by the wayside. These guys came in, did a tremendous job to making sure that we rectify the situation, that these vendors get paid to make sure that we can assure that young men and women can stay employed. Especially, our job is to make sure that we reduce violence through employment, dealing with the hardest to serve and people who struggle with social profiling. So I commend my Aldermen for working with me to making sure that we can, at least someone is speaking up for the young generation. They don't see it now, but we will continue with this platform and have a loud bullhorn to say, "Put the guns down. Stop this carjacking, stop this killing, and let's create an opportunity for you through employment." And we want to make sure that we can give them a drill, a hammer, and take that gun out of their hands so we can provide some opportunity for them to make sure they can stop this senseless violence in the city of Chicago, because we're tired of seeing it, hearing it, on the news every day, babies getting killed. And when I talk to my Aldermen, you know, they standing solidly with the community, say, "Let's figure this thing out." So I'd like to thank everyone for working with us to make sure we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for your comments. Our next speaker is Tanisha Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot and the city council for allowing me to provide public comment about the city budget. My name is Tanisha Harris, and I am the Chicagoland Conservation Manager at the Illinois Environmental Council, or IEC. IEC represents over one hundred environmental organizations from across the state, and on behalf of these organizations, we would like to voice our support for the budget. The environmental community sees this budget as an environmental budget. From funding to use green infrastructure to reduce flooding to seventy-five million for clean energy, environmental justice projects, this budget takes a multifaceted approach to meet goals for clean water, clean energy, open space and conservation, local food, waste, and clean transportation. This signals to Chicagoans that the city is willing to take the necessary steps to create a more sustainable and healthy present and future. However, I implore the city to go further on its environmental priorities. For the past decade, Chicago's tree canopy has dwindled from nineteen to sixteen percent. Chicago's south and west sides have the lowest tree canopy coverage in the city, but the most issues with air pollution and the urban heat island effect. Meaning, these areas experience warmer temperatures in its surroundings due to their lack of green space. Additionally, we are losing healthy ash trees. IEC believes that the city should allocate a portion of its forty-six million dollar budget for ash tree inoculation. Trees provide invaluable ecosystem services, such as reducing flooding, cleaning our air, and cooling neighborhoods on hot days. Please note, the city saves money by preserving healthy trees. A healthy, mature tree provides more public health and environmental benefits than a sapling. We must preserve and maintain healthy trees to ensure the growth and longevity of our tree canopy. We also need to expand alternative clean methods of transportation. Irish City Council to also support the e-scooter ordinance and pave the way for a permanent e-scooter program so there are alternatives to getting around the city and people don't have to rely on a car. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, for your comments. Our next speaker is Sandy Schneller.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Aldermanic Wardsmen. My name is Sandy Schneller. Our city is under siege. Do not place total blame on our mayor. Do not place total blame on our state's attorney. Shame upon you who pit top-ranking women against each other. However, do include blame on the fifty seats in that pit. We, the people of Chicago, are tired of the increasing violence in our seventy-seven communities that you oversee. We are tired of gun shootings. I reside on the east side of the Twenty-seventh Ward and hear gunshots and sirens on a regular now. In recent weeks, multiple gunfire rang out in front of my building at ten PM, and then again at two AM. Shootings occurred day or night, it doesn't matter. The area is filled with drug deals and users on the streets. Residents are afraid to walk the defined walkable neighborhoods. The near north side is coined as the new bad neighborhood. We are tired of kids being shot. We are tired of expressway shootings. We are tired of carjackings. Please, please bring together your resources and contribute to the resolution of this crisis. You must come together and pull out all the stops to do the right thing to improve these measures. Do it in the right way, for the right reasons, and you will inevitably get the right results. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneller, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no more speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
This concludes the public comment period. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, a resolution. We have one congratulatory resolution today for the Reverend Jesse Jackson on the occasion of his eightieth birthday. Reverend Jackson and his family gather in the box. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Morning, Madam President. I move the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of this resolution.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
A resolution congratulating Reverend Jesse Jackson on his eightieth birthday. A resolution from our honor, the mayor, together with Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez, Taylor, Haddon, Brookins, Irvin, Scott, Austin, Sawyer, Smith, Tunny, Spisato, Lopez, Kapelman, Riley, King, Martin, Waguspack, Harrison, Dow, Mitz, Laspada, Ramirez Rosa, Harris, Vegas, Vazquez, Moore, Nugent, Cardness, Rodriguez, Silverstein, Garza, and Burke. Whereas the members of the city council of the city of Chicago wish to extend our congratulations and warmest birthday wishes to the Reverend Jesse Lewis Jackson, Sr., one of America's foremost civil rights, religious, and political figures in celebration of his eightieth birthday. And whereas Reverend Jackson was born on October eighth, nineteen forty-one, in Greenville, South Carolina, Reverend Jackson enrolled in the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and later transferred to North Carolina Agriculture and Technical State University, a historically black university in Greensboro, North Carolina. And whereas while attending North Carolina A&amp;T, Reverend Jackson became involved in local civil rights activism, leading protest incidents to decent, to desecrate, or sorry, desecrate theaters and restaurants in Greensboro. And whereas a passionate civil servant, Reverend Jackson, met the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in nineteen sixty-five and joined the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. Reverend Jackson led the Chicago chapter of SCLC's Economic Arm, Operation Bread Basket, before becoming its national director in nineteen sixty-seven. And whereas called to serve, Reverend Jackson became an ordained minister in nineteen sixty-eight and was awarded a Master of Divinity degree from the Chicago Theological Seminary in two thousand. And whereas in nineteen seventy-one, Reverend Jackson established the People United to Save Humanity, known as Operation Push, to improve the economic conditions of Black communities across the United States. In nineteen eighty-four, Reverend Jackson founded the National Rainbow Coalition, a social justice organization which later emerged with Operation Push to form the Rainbow Push Coalition. And whereas Reverend Jackson mounted two groundbreaking campaigns for the Democratic nomination for president in nineteen eighty-four and nineteen eighty-eight, Reverend Jackson's campaign registered millions of new voters, and he won historic victories during the primaries. And whereas Reverend Jackson is recognized international leader and diplomat and has extended his work to the global stage, including in South Africa during the apartheid. And whereas Reverend Jackson married his college sweetheart, Jaclyn, in nineteen sixty-three, and together they raised five children. Santita Jackson, Congressman Jesse Jackson, Jr., Jonathan Luther Jackson, Yusef DuBois Jackson, and Jaclyn Jackson, Jr. And whereas the contributions Reverend Jackson has made during his lifetime have left an impact in the United States and globally. Even now, Reverend Jackson continues important work for advocating for the passage of voting rights legislation now. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the mayor and the members of the city council of the city of Chicago gathered this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-one, do hereby congratulate the Reverend Jesse Jackson on the occasion of his eightieth birthday and extend our heartfelt best wishes for his continued good health, happiness, and success. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Reverend Jesse Jackson as a token of our esteem and good wishes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I gleefully stand in support of this resolution. Being in a profession that somebody normally gets their flowers after they're not around to see them, it is great to be able to recognize Reverend Jackson. There hasn't been a time in my life that Reverend Jackson hasn't been there. Outside of my parents, I believe that he was the first person to consistently tell me that I was somebody. My mother volunteered at Operation Bread Basket, and current, the staples that I would always see was obviously Reverend Jackson, Ed Reddick, and Alice Trigay. I am just so proud that he has been serving our community for decades, and wish him continued health and success so that you can continue to serve the community who needs you so much now more than ever. God bless you and your family, Reverend Jackson.
Thank you, Alderman Brookins. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for recognizing me for the opportunity to honor the great Reverend Jesse Jackson, Sr., and happy belated birthday to you, Reverend Jackson. What can be said to properly honor someone who opened the door on the civil rights movement in Chicago and the world? Most famously, as the founder of People United to Save Humanity, which became Rainbow Push, Reverend Jackson was at the center of the fight for racial equality. His message and magnetic personality brought thousands and continues to bring thousands to the cause. Reverend Jackson has built his reputation for action while home from college as part of the Greenville Eight, sacrificing his personal safety to highlight the horrors of the Jim Crow South. He continued his civil rights work with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., participating in the Selma marches. He was later tasked by Dr. King to raise up the New Southern Christian Leadership Conference in Chicago. Once settled, Reverend Jackson was the center of the Chicago's Movement for Equality. His individual accolades and actions are too many to name here, but in short, there is no civil rights movement in Chicago without the work, sacrifice, vision, and leadership of Dr. Reverend Jackson. And as we saw last summer with the protests, and the work continues to this day to lift up minority and undeserved communities, the lessons and guidance that Reverend Jackson stood for still beats through the heart of Chicago to this day. Thank you, Reverend Jackson. Thank you for the ideals of peace and equality that you have fought so hard for, for all these years. And thank you for continuing the fight for civil rights as the struggles for the Black community for equality are not yet complete and realized. God bless you, and God bless your family.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. To everyone that's sitting there, Reverend Meeks, Reverend Anderson, Reverend Attorney Jeanette Wilson, my brother Reverend Wheel Hall, Jonathan, my sweetheart Santita, and my godmother, C. Betty Magnus, we all here honor, to honor today the Reverend Jesse Jackson as we celebrate his 80th birthday. The intersection of our life started before the foundation of this earth. It began with a song, "I Must Tell Jesus." All of my traps. I cannot bear this burden alone. Because of your relationship with my spiritual father, Reverend Clay Evans, our relationship started out when I was very young age. Being a part of Jackson Action, we consistently had to go to Operation Push. We had to go. But I love going because we were able to learn about fighting for civil rights. God ordained these relationships, like I said before, the foundation of the earth. Because of you, Reverend Evans and Dr. King, formed a relationship. Because of you, whenever, when Reverend Evans stood up and allowed Dr. King to speak at his church when others wouldn't, and the powers-to-be stopped the church from getting built, it was you who put your reputation and name on that mortgage. And because of that, fellowship still stands. From the basement of fellowship running Operation Bread Basket to the boardrooms of Wall Street and Silicon Valley, I have yet to meet anyone who is able to go in and make sure there is Black representation, women representation, and a rainbow of representation in different boardrooms across this country. Like I said, as a child, we were taken to Push, and yes, we were there, learning from the lights of Alex Trigay and The Little Warrior. Our minds were formed to fight for democracy and justice regardless of person's race, ethnicity, or gender. A servant I am today, not by accident. I am a servant alderman because of the lessons I learned at fellowship and at Push. Like you, I have made the powers-to-be very uncomfortable. Like you, I have made the powers-to-be call me crazy. But it was you who told me, when you are visionary, you offend those who are stationary. Thank you for being a visionary when others were stationary. Happy 80th birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. Reverend Jackson, I have followed you all of my life while I was trying to find out the purpose of my own life. It was touching. Selfishly, I saw you save so many lives and create so many paths for the men that came, that followed you. And I do want to wish you a happy birthday and many, many more. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. The chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Reverend, as I was sitting here, I was thinking, how many times have I been in your presence? And that's just too many to number, but I can recall when my husband Lemuel was running for alderman, and he came to Operation Push to seek your guidance on whether he should run or not, or your support. Then I can recall a time when then Alderman Fredrina Lyles and I did the same thing, because we needed the guidance of you to show us and tell us how we can become good aldermen. But the best time that I've had with you has been at my church, where you know that our pastor is Reverend Donald L. Parsons. Every time we needed a martyr at our church, he brought up Reverend Jesse Jackson. You became our Noah. You became our Abraham. You became that figure that we needed, and Reverend would always deliver a sermon regarding you, as he did this Sunday. Jonathan was there with us, but he preached on Eve and Adam. You should have just said no. So we have said that over and over so many times that we should have just said no. But with you, you said never again. And they gave us the push to keep on going. So I'm grateful for the times that I have been in your presence, because I have been glorified for that, because you have given me strength to continue on with the work that we do in this city, and do it for the people that we represent. So for that, happy birthday. My pastor kind of told both of y'all ages, Sunday, him 74 and you 80. I'm kind of right behind you also. But happy birthday to you and many, many more, because we just lost an icon, Timo, but 102. So we're grateful and praying that God will allow you to be here till 102. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Now, I'm gonna date myself, the International Amphitheater on Halsted, Black Expo, where I know I could go and I could see Reverend Jackson with his dashiki and his Afro. And you know, all the little kids, and we were little kids, I gotta say that, would love to come there, get a goodie bag, but more than that, hear about Black love, Black empowerment, Black leadership, and get to see somebody that looks like us tell us that we am, we am, I am somebody. So Reverend Jackson, today I thank you for being a great leader. I thank you for being a person and being brave enough to do many things that I can't do. So today I'm grateful to wish you a very happy birthday and wish you many, many more, and you are so deserving, and today you deserve this and so much more for everything that you've given the Black community, not just Chicago, but to the nation. Thank you, sir, for your leadership and your guidance. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farah.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Reverend Jackson, I just want to say happy birthday to you, happy 80th birthday. You hail from Greenville, South Carolina. You are son of Chicago, but your heart has transcended the world, particularly in the United States, where your, your fight for racial, social, economic, and judicial equity and equality has made your mark in this world. We are still in the midst, in our generation, I say today's generation, we're still in the midst of fighting for equity in our schools and our education. We're still in the midst of fighting for equity in the workplace. We're still in the midst of racial inequalities. But I thank you for your push and your work that you've gotten us from there to here. And I think it's your heart and your desire and your life's work is that's gonna take us to another level. I think that the one thing that many of us in our lives can aspire to is that's to create a better society and to inspire people on our way. And I think that's what you've done for millions of people. You've given them inspiration. You've given them a desire to want to make a better world to live in, and I thank you for that. As you celebrate your 80th birthday, I hope you are also celebrating your works, your work that has inspired many of us in this council, but also your work that has inspired those across this world. Thank you so much. And Madam President, I wish my name to be added to those that are signed on to this resolution. Happy birthday, Reverend Jackson.
It shall be reflected. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I too rise on behalf of a neighbor for over 50 years, I can't believe that, a friend, a mentor, a leader, and Reverend Jackson, I don't know whether you know, but when you formed Operation Bread Basket, my family lived on 50th and Woodlawn, and my cousin Cynthia would take me around there. And I never knew that only a few years later, when I would meet you at Tom Lewis's house for Thanksgiving or Christmas, that it would be the beginning of a relationship that I had no idea how it would turn out. And as many kids do, we look up to people and you have no idea that you are being watched. And you were being watched, but you were also being followed. What I was able to see started occurring in high school when I was at the lab school and there was no African-American studies. And because of you and Tom Lewis and Tom Todd, we were able to bring Black speakers to the lab school. We were able to create a Black Studies. We were able to create a Black Student Association. And it is because of your guidance, your leadership, and just showing us how to get it done, not just there, but on the organizing front, or on the protesting front. Because I think what a lot of people don't understand is that's a lot more than just showing up. There's got to be a plan, and you've got to execute that plan, and you've got to know who's gonna go to jail. You gotta know who's gonna get you out of jail, and you have that plan. And I wish people would listen to it today. I wish people would listen to it today. I am, I am so proud to have been at your knee and in your circle, to have learned from you and your family. And Jonathan and Santina, you have been there the whole time, and thank you for your love and your support. And Reverend, I don't know how you find out where stuff is gonna be and how it's gonna be, but you always show up. You always show up. And so I'm gonna leave you with this, because you still continue the fight 60 years later. But I think what meant the most was in our neighborhood when we were without a grocery store, and we finally got a grocery store. You were there to uplift the community just as you have done all 80 years. Thank you for being you. Thank you for loving me and my family. Happy birthday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The chair recognizes Alderman Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Wow, as I look in the box, it's just like a, almost like a family reunion. I remember the first time I met you, Reverend Jackson. It was, you know, I don't know if you remember this, was at Hersch's High School when Hersch won the state championship in the early 70s. I was a young kid. My father brought me to the auditorium at Hersch, and like Michelle said, I was resplendent in my dashiki and, and had all my Afro going. And my dad introduced me to you, and you gave me a hug and a kiss. And I'll tell you, at that time, I was not a particularly affectionate kind of guy. So I, after you kissed me, I was like, ah, man, kiss me. But fast forward to some years later, I was asked by Reverend Attorney Jeanette Wilson, under your leadership, to come do some work at Operation Push. And it was work with what we call marginalized individuals, people that were ostracized, cast out. You know, some people refer to them as gangs, street organizations. But I was tasked with working with them through you, with the help of Jeanette Wilson, and I learned so much about us having Black love, about men getting together and being strong, and working to support each other. And because of that work, we were able to get gang violence down, or street violence down, almost by half, when we were working together. And I thank you for that. You know, we were able to do things that people didn't think we were able to do. And I'll forever be grateful to you for that, and all the work, being around the Push family. And I look around, I see all my friends and people I've known for ages here. And I also, I am always, you know, thankful for you for bringing me to the family, able to do work, and, and able to make a difference even back then, and, and even now. I attributed that a lot to what the work I did over at Operation Push. May you have a wonderful 80th birthday and many, many more. And I salute you and the Jackson family on your work that you've done for the world. Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Sawyer. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I have to tell you that the first time I, I met you, Reverend, was during the Harold Washington days. I was a young Puerto Rican, maybe four, five years coming from Puerto Rico. And I was blessed with the opportunity to work in this administration. And through and in my work in that administration, I got to meet you. And I always admire you because of what you represented. You were such a big image before my eyes, somebody that everybody should emulate at the time I used to think. And so over the years, although we have never had much contact over the years politically, I have always admired your tenacity, your tactic, you, your intelligence, how to approach the political challenges that we as people of color have always faced in this city. And you have done it nationally as well. I remember when you ran for president, it was brilliant how you were able to bring Appalachia and with black, the black community and Latinos together when you were running for president back so many years ago. So those are the memories that I have with you. And also on the more humorous side, I, every time that I used to hear you delivering a speech, it was also with rhymes. And I said, man, you know, this is a, this is a rapper, Reverend, politician. And if my middle son, who is into hip hop music, producing music, would have been alive and a teenager back then when you were so in your prime, I think that he would have used much, many of your speeches into producing music today. And so again, I wanna, it's very humble, and, and that guy is, today is 16, the, my son, I'm my middle son, that I'm making reference to. And the last time that I saw you was during the swearing in of our mayor. And you took a picture with my son that I still hold it very close to my heart, and he does as well. Thank you for all of the years that you have given us, to us in the city of Chicago. Thank you for your leadership. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Maldonado. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this resolution. I was, you know, I was a young man when I, I first met you, a really young man, running around with my father in the Harold Washington administration. And at that time, I did not know the, the stature that you carried and, and your reverence in, in, in this world. And, and I remember my father sitting me down, and there are very few places, you know, being this young, where you remember where you are and, and what you were doing. But I remember in 1980, 1988, my father sitting me down in front of a television and watching you speak at the Democratic National Convention. And it was amazing to me, somebody that I had seen, somebody that I had touched, somebody that had been so kind to me, to see you on television, speaking to the world. And it sparked something inside of me. And Alderman Talia Pharoah talked about, you know, how you have inspired so many. I believe that was my call to politics at that time. Again, to see somebody that you know, doing the things that you have done was simply amazing to me. And the funny thing about it is, you're still doing that to, to folks this, this day. And so my children happen to watch A Different World. For those of you who don't know, A Different World is a, a television show about a black college in the South. And we were watching, and we've been going through this catalog, and we happened to go about the voting, the voting episode, and you happened to be there. And to be so ahead of your time to talk about how we need to get people to vote and how we need to just en masse get folks in college and, and young people out to vote. And to be able to share that with my children was amazing to me. And so I just want to thank you for all that you have done, for being the spark to me and hopefully being the spark to my children in the future. And I wanted to make sure I stood up to be able to give you your flowers while you're still here. Happy birthday, Reverend. We love you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam President. Reverend Jackson, I too rise in support of this resolution to wish you a happy birthday. And just so you know, I did wish it on Facebook as well, on your birthday. I remember myself being much younger, not even in Chicago, when you stood on that balcony in Memphis, Tennessee. During that time, it was a movement, not only in Arkansas, but it was in the world. I still remember my mother wanting to go to Memphis. Why would she want to go to Memphis? I don't know, but behind that, there was a movement started in Arkansas. Integrating schools, boycotting, people's being arrested, just the equal rights. Not knowing that one day I was coming to Chicago, and I happened to be an Alderman. First person I met and the first issue I dealt with, Reverend Jackson showed up. You may have remembered Ms. Minnie Strobs. She lost her house, Reverend Jackson, and you wasn't having it. You reached out to those banks, made them get their paperwork in order, and Ms. Minnie kept her home. That's not the only incident that I've seen you involved with because you were also with Ms. Cersei when her son got killed. You was there for to support the family, a family that's been grieving, just one of the many families. Then I met you again at Merrill Leifert's election night. I never saw you so happy before. You was almost at it. We did it, we did it, we did it. Like, that's all right. We did do it. You have been in the forefront of every issue that faces our community each and every day. As an individual, you can only do what you can do, but you teach. The respect of a lot of my ministerial pastors, look to you for leadership, working together. You want to build wealth. You want to create that base where all people can be created equal. You believe in that. Your organization, you helped us through the pandemic. You provided food for us, masks for communities all over. Your staff are constantly working. I suppose the name Operation Push came from the push that you were giving to the people. And always do more, you could always do better and make this place a better place to live. So on behalf of 37 more, we want to thank you. We want to wish you a happy birthday. We don't always give you those flowers, but boy, is it good to give it to you while you're here. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for the work that you're doing and continuing to do this day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Metz. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And it's a pleasure to rise in support of this resolution. Forgive me for being behind this pole and without ability to say everybody. I'd be remiss if I didn't stand to honor a legend, someone who has impacted positively all of our city and really all of our country. And I appreciate all of who you are, Dr. Reverend. It was in the campaign for mayor in 2015 that I remember most vividly your amazing grace alongside your support for my mentor, candidate for mayor at the time, Chuy Garcia, and your brilliance, your oratory, your presence, which is so magnificent. And I will carry that time that we spent during the campaign with me for the rest of my life. On behalf of my community, muchas gracias, Jesse. Si se puede y feliz cumpleaños.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I too join this resolution, celebrating the birthday of a great man and a great soul. When he founded the Rainbow, Rainbow Bush Coalition, he really hit in mind a society where we come together, where we have common ground is our essential checklist. I want to note a couple of phrases that, that he used to say many years ago, but I know he believes it. He believes that when we close ranks on common interest, we win. When we don't, we lose. And I want to say these quotes because two thirds of this body is of color, Latinos and African-Americans. And he's a man that has fought long and hard to have common ground, not on color, but on mutual interest. And so I want to make sure we live up to your ideals, Reverend Jackson. We really do. This body should live up to your ideals. We were either bound by suffering or marginalization or bound by hope. He used to say about Latinos, and this is something that comes from you and your, and your beliefs, those who are facing immigrant challenges of gaining citizenship are bound by that. Those that share a common language are bound by that too. Those who want equal protection under the law and justice enforced are bound by that too. Your speech at the convention and your speeches about being somebody, knowing your background, where you came from inspires many. I know it inspires me. But more importantly, what I wanted to share is your life's work about bringing people together. And, you know, we're about to engage in, in a redistricting, there's going to be probably the toughest decade when it comes to bringing folks together, African-Americans and Latinos. And our common interest is bound by so many things. One just happens to be the right to vote, the right to organize, and the right to have common values just on being people and serving others. And when you say that it does not matter your color, it matters, it matters your values, we're gonna take that to heart, both African-Americans and Latinos. And if this great man has spent his life in such endurance, go back to history, you're back to checking where he came from and the, the life he endured when he was young, and still believes that finding common ground is the way to go forward, then you ought to, they ought to inspire you. Understandably, Latino growth does not necessarily equal to actual power. And you understand that, Jesse Jackson, Reverend Jackson. It is how you organize it. It's how you pull it together. It's how you bring folks together and make sure that that power becomes everybody's power. And so I appreciate you to no end. Your speeches should be studied in schools. From day one, kids should know hard work, and when you put into it, they should believe in themselves. We need more of that in this world. We need more of people believing in themselves like you believe in others and also yourself and how you got here and through your life's work, because that's what it's all about. It's not easy. You proved it. And thank you. From the bottom of our heart, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cardenas. The Chair recognizes Alderman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Happy birthday, Reverend Jackson. I've been privileged enough to know you for a, a long time. I was introduced to you by my dad at Sedlowski. You are someone that I have admired from afar for a long time. You have always been on the front lines of what's right and just, always. I had the privilege of marching in the street with you and my dad simultaneously with Susan Sarandon at the Wisconsin Uprising. I have pictures of that somewhere in my dad's basement, but it's an archaeological dig to find anything down there. I'm proud to know you. I'm proud to know your family, but I'm even prouder of the work and the legacy that you have built. You haven't just touched lives in the city of Chicago, you've touched lives all over the world. Thank you for being you, and I give you my word that the Jacksons and the Sedlowskis will continue your legacy, sir. Thank you and happy birthday.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman King.
Thank you, Madam President. I too am honored and humbled to rise in support of this ordinance. As Alderman of the Fourth Ward, I have the honor of having Operation Push in the community, an institution that has served and continues to serve for over 50 years. However, the, the true honor has just been the relationship, Rev, that you have afforded me. This week, it has become so clear how fortunate it has been to know you, people like you and Timo Black. It is definitely our fortune to have people like you, and we're blessed to know you. I remember when I first saw you, it was on the campus of Jackson State in Jackson, Mississippi. I was a young kid and you had that big fro. And I just remember standing as a kid, being in awe. However, I never thought that I would ever be sitting across the table from you as a thought partner. Rudyard, Rudyard Kipling said, "If you can walk with the crowd and keep your virtue or walk with kings nor lose the common touch. If neither foes nor loving friends can hurt you. If all men count with you but none too much. If you can fill the unforgiving minute with 60 seconds worth of distance run, yours is the earth and everything that's in it. And which is more, you'll be a man, my son." This poem exemplifies what you have been to us in this world, as my colleagues have said. Your extraordinary, extraordinary life as a trailblazer, your steadfastness in the civil rights movement, in every movement, has just been a guide for all of us to come behind you. We stand on your shoulders, Rev. I want you to know that we love you, we honor you. The journey you chose in this life, we know, has not been easy. I can't imagine the sacrifices that you, your family, Ms. Jackson, Congressman Jackson, Jonathan, Santita, Youssef, Reverend Jeanette, I go on and on, have had to make over the years because of your commitment to the community. But know that it hasn't gone in vain and that we appreciate and respect you. As you celebrate this 80th week of your life, I hope that God continues to bless you and your family, because I know you're continuing the work. I know you will. And so thank you for everything you've done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hammond.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Extra feedback today. Good morning, everybody, and happy birthday, Reverend Jackson. From the 49th Ward, we appreciate you, we love you. I'll say, my colleagues have recounted so many of their personal memories of you, not being from Chicago, not growing up around Operation Push. That's not something that I can share. But I can tell you that from Columbus, Ohio, growing up with a mom and a dad who respected you, who followed your work, a father who actually went to North Carolina A&amp;T some years after you were there, you were definitely a household name. And I'll say that it's an honor to have a living legend amongst us, and I especially appreciate the efforts that you've made and in my interactions over this last decade in the city in connecting with our young people. Your work continues through your organization, through your family, but also through the lessons that you teach the generations that follow you. We're still in the streets. We've got young people now coming up that are still fighting. You have set an example of when to fight, of when to mend, when to build bridges, and I hope that we'll continue to take those lessons as we move forward and continue the struggles, working towards the vision that you and so many others in your organization have put forth for us. So happy birthday, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Hattan. The chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the legend himself, Reverend Jackson. I undoubtedly stand in support of honoring this living legend. Eighty years ago, Dr. Jackson, Franklin Roosevelt was president, Edward Kelly was mayor of Chicago, Eminem Candice was created, Billie Holiday sang a song, "God Bless the Child," and in your mother's womb, we got Dr. Reverend Jesse Lewis Jackson, the leader's leader. When I see Pastor James Meeks, Pastor JD Anderson, Dr. Jeanette Wilson, Mr. Omar Sharif, Pastor Will Hall, Mama Betty, John Mitchell, Shinta Scholzberg, and the entire Rainbow Push team, I am so grateful. Before becoming Alderman, my mother, Bishop Coleman and Pastor Coleman and Reverend Hatchett brought me over to Push. Mama Betty took me in the hallway in the back near the stage, and Reverend, you let me know throughout these years that I am somebody. Because of you, we were able to feed thousands throughout this pandemic. Reverend Jackson, you and your team came to Inglewood in the freezing cold. You all, it was so cold, your face would run and you would be afraid to get anything wet. Thank you for telling us that we are somebody. I want to especially thank your family for sharing you with this nation, not only in Chicago, but the entire world. To your beautiful wife, Mrs. Jacqueline Jackson, your son Jonathan, your beautiful daughter Santina, and the rest of your children, thank you for sharing our leader's leader with this nation. There's never been an issue, there's never been a platform, there's never been a challenge, not only in Chicago, but in the 16th Ward that Reverend, Doctor, you were not there supporting with us, standing with us. And deep down in my heart, I still believe that we shall overcome one day. God bless you, Reverend Jackson. Happy 80th birthday, and truly, we thank God for you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I too rise to support this resolution, but I first have to say hello to my pastor, Reverend James T. Meeks, the greatest pastor in the world, if I can say that myself. But Reverend Jackson, I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your life's work. When people are sharing their stories about you and what you have done, the impact that you've had on this nation, I was sitting here saying to myself, what do you say to somebody who has seen it all, done it all, and said it all on behalf of our community? We all are here today standing on your shoulders. And I remember the time, few years ago, I'm not going to tell you how many, but I was a young Alderman in this city, and I got summoned to Reverend Jackson's office. I grew up never having any political experience, and you talk about somebody terrified and mortified, because I had no idea what I was in for. But when I walked into Reverend Jackson's office, the only thing you said to me was, "Young leadership." You were cultivating young leadership, not only here but across the nation. And so I took that to heart, and I want to thank you for inspiring me to be the Alderman that I am, that I continue to fight, because that's what you have taught all of us to do, and that is to fight. So thank you so much for your life's work. Thank you so much for everything that you have done and continue to do on behalf of our community. God bless you and happy birthday.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. The chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Mayor, and happy birthday, Reverend Jackson. It's good to see you. I want to take a little different angle than some of my colleagues who had much more intimate and closer contact with you than I did. I grew up on the southwest side, and you were not the biggest fan in my family in the early 80s. Also, as a closet gay man, I wasn't that supported either by my own family. So it's interesting getting to meet you and the early struggles to make sure the LGBT community was part of the rainbow, which is so common today, but it was because of your support, early support with Alderman Sawyer's father, Ed Burke, back in the Human Rights Ordinance days in City Council in 88. I'm sure your leadership was part of an understanding that we all have so much more in common than we have apart, which is really what you have tried to do in your entire life. I think especially my dad actually softened to you early on as he softened to me, but he was here the day that I was inaugurated as the first open LGBT Alderman. And I think, I think a lot of our, as we can see by our city, we have five or more sitting on this council floor, including our mayor. But it was because of your leadership on that particular issue that I'm forever indebted to you and your family. The second part of it, I think, was mentioned by a couple of my colleagues, is this idea of the strength of the black consumer in corporate America. So today, you see companies just bending over backwards trying to affiliate, you know, the commercials today are very interesting. Almost every commercial has a person of color in it, which you know back in the day was hardly existent. So your pioneering work on corporate America and the diversity, not only in the boardroom, but the strength of the black consumer, really are two aspects that I wanted to highlight in commemorating your work and your birthday and hopefully your continued good health. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Tunny. The chair recognizes Alderman Cicero Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also like to rise in support of this resolution. Please, Reverend Jackson, receive the greetings and a big thank you from the 25th Ward residents. Many of our faith leaders and community leaders wanted to express their gratitude, and I have a message from them. Reverend Jackson has been standing up for humanity of the people most institutionalized and marginalized his entire life. He bravely stood up when terrorism against freedom fighters was far more prevalent in the United States. Reverend Jackson's courage and leadership was so outstanding that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. quickly recognized Reverend Jackson as a fellow freedom fighter. Together, their leadership dismantled systemic barriers for us all to have the dignity we deserve, and my spirit is heavy with gratitude for the war Reverend Jackson and our elders fought for and continue to fight for. You're an inspiration for many generations and our youth who aspire to be freedom fighters in an age of war, labor exploitation, and climate change. We must not forget the conditions and courage it took to struggle at every state and every step in this intergenerational fight for decolonization and justice. With Reverend Jackson, the Rainbow Push Coalition raised its voice to the world about solidarity while our oppressors use media, violence, dehumanization, fear, and other tactics to divide us. Reverend Jackson's leadership helped us recognize that only through solidarity and struggle against our mutual oppressors, we will be all free together. Reverend Barber said it well, Reverend Jackson has been a leader on economic issues and human rights issues around the globe, from Haiti to South Africa. He has supported the Black Lives Matter movement, fought against police brutality, for voting rights, and multiple causes for liberation, justice, and equality. We owe him a tremendous debt. Because of leaders like him, my generation and generations to come have hoped for the fight finally to bring us justice at last. Thank you, Reverend Jackson, for a life well-lived. On behalf of the residents of the 25th Ward, we wish you a happy birthday. Feliz cumpleaños. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm pleased to be able to be here today to witness this historic day and to join as a sponsor in this resolution. But it's not the first time, Reverend Jackson, as you know, that my name has appeared on a resolution honoring you. You were here on that day when the city council welcomed you to this chamber in 1999, when the city council, for the very first time, voted to award the Chicago Medal of Merit to Reverend Jackson. But it wasn't the first time that Reverend Jackson had achieved a great diplomatic coup. It was actually the fourth time that he secured the release of American citizens held by foreign powers. The first time, of course, was 1984, when he secured the release of Lieutenant Goodman, a naval aviator who was shot down over Syria. And it was Reverend Jackson that negotiated with Assad to release Lieutenant Goodman, who went on, of course, to serve and ultimately retire from the Navy as a commander. And of course, we can't ignore the diplomatic efforts that he made in 1990 when he secured the release of 700 women and children who were held captive after the invasion of Kuwait by Iraq, or in Cuba when he negotiated with Fidel Castro and secured the release of 48 political prisoners. And we can read about the reverend's quote when he walked those three soldiers over the border from Serbia to Croatia, and he said, "Free at last, free at last. Praise God Almighty, free at last." What kind of Chicagoan could compare to that record? And you know, Madam President and ladies and gentlemen of the council, that day here in 1999, when you were awarded the Medal of Merit, we offered you the privilege of the floor, something that was extremely rare at that time. And I still remember your words, Reverend. You said to the members of the city council, "Dealing with Molosovik, the dictator, was easy. It was easy to negotiate with Molosovik. It's Verdoliak and Burke that I had trouble with." But yet, here we are. Here we are today to wish you a happy birthday and to congratulate you and your family on all that you have done. And let us hope, Reverend, that we can be here to do likewise when you reach your biblical fourscore and 10. May God continue to grant you health and strength, and thank you for the friendship that you have extended to all people, and especially to Travis and Anne, who send their
Thank you, Alderman Burke, for those stirring words. And as always, historical context, Reverend, I appreciate it. The chair recognizes Alderman Jeanette Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before there was Operation Push, there was the Kenwood Oakland Community Organization. And too often, that history is never talked about. Jesse Jackson was their first executive director, and in his time, he helped with Martin Luther King High School, which the community didn't have, and also a clinic that is currently there for the community. And so we talk about what Reverend Jackson did for the world, but let's not forget what he did in his own community. And something that touched me when I became older, in 2015, 12 folks went on a hunger strike, and you were the only pastor to open your doors and say, "Hey, stay here for the night." You made sure we were okay. You brought it to the national media. And so diet is here today because of your love and support for the young people in their community. And so happy birthday and thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Taylor. The chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise and am grateful to also be associated with this resolution and wish the Reverend a happy 80th birthday. To what my colleague mentioned earlier, Alderman Malinato, it was the rhymes that got my attention Hearing "Up with Hope, Down with Dope" as a kid resonated across the board, having the kind of communication, being the great communicator, to the point that it was pervasive in our culture, to having Saturday Night Live skits about you shows the power of verse, of your skill and your ability to channel soul and spirit to connect with everyone, not just in our city, but across the country and in our world. And we can't thank you enough. I think often we hear about coalition, people like to throw the word coalition around without an understanding of what it takes to build coalition, to have to come to the table with people who you don't agree fully with and with people who don't agree with each other, and having to be in the middle of that to find commonality, to talk about our shared struggle, and the opportunity to reach a shared prosperity. The amount of work that it takes to get there and do that, I think, can't be overstated. And I want to thank you so much, because everything you've done and everything you've represented has had such an impact on all of us. I know that we're here in standing with this resolution to wish you a happy birthday and give someone their flowers while they're still here, but I think it's an opportunity we all have to be graced by your presence in this council, and I want to thank you, because I know you know it, but we want to make sure to say it again, that what you've done, what you've represented, and the words you've put out have planted so many seeds that have sown everywhere, including the members of this council. So our hope is to do more to really live up to the standard you've set and make sure that for 80 years further and even beyond, that we're able to carry that torch and continue the building of coalition necessary, because we understand that the power of the people is stronger than the people in power, and we have to thank you for that. So again, happy birthday, feliz cumpleaños, and I love you and we love you. Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The chair recognizes Alderman Smith.
Thank you. I think my relationship with you is most distant so far. I did not grow up in Chicago. In fact, I'm really kind of honored and flipped out that I'm in the same room of somebody who has been such a national presence. that I'm in the same room of somebody who has been such a national presence. But I did get to know you, sir, through my television screen. When I was a young, young person in the 60s and the 70s, got to see you lead the country on so many issues that came into me only because of my television screen. And those things led to dinnertime conversations in my family, in my nice suburb in New York where I grew up, that led to challenging conversations with parents and relatives about what direction the world should be taken. And that led to my own involvement in student governments and things about equity in Attica, which is where what was happening at the time at my, at my school, at my, where I was going to school. So I know, I'm amazed at how many personal connections are in this very room. But I wanted to speak on behalf of the millions of people in America who have been inspired by you and changed by the positions and strength that you have demonstrated throughout your entire career. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Alderman Smith. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reverend Jackson and family, we laud the work that you've done in Chicago communities to bring peace and bring communities together. And I'll just reiterate what my colleagues have said cumulatively, that we appreciate all that work over the decades. And I was going to say that it was really understated about your work globally. Alderman Burke has already done that. And having worked in the places that you went to, I would have been lucky to have your phone number and didn't know you at the time, but it would have been helpful. But you, you have people that have disagreed with you over the years. But the one thing that they should always remember is that you were always working from your heart. And I think that is what is most important, every day and every effort that you make, that you work from the heart. So I wish, I wish you and your whole family, your extended family, continued peace and continued good health and joy as you celebrate your birthday. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Alderman Wegasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Reverend Jackson, I know you have a long history with my family, working together to make Chicago a better city. One of my colleagues, or many of them, mentioned about bringing people together. I remember a specific opportunity I had to be with you. A few years back in my community, we had a terrible tragedy. You invited our community members to come to Operation Push, to pray and to get to know one another. And I remember, and I repeat this to people all the time, you mentioned about finding commonality between our communities. And you said that our community in Bridgeport and the community east of us had more in common than either of us had with Oneonta. And you're pointing out where we should look to find commonality and find common good. And that has stuck with me for many years. So on behalf of the residents of the 11th Ward, your legacy of bringing people together to improve lives, I just want to wish you a happy birthday and many more. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam President. Reverend Jackson, I just want to wish you a happy birthday from the North Side. This sounds like a retirement, but I will tell you that we still need you active. You have inspired people in this body to become leaders, inspired people around our city to become leaders, around the country and the world to become leaders. But at this moment in Chicago, this moment in our country, we still need your leadership. And I know you got the fight in you. I hope you're here on your 90th birthday or your 100th birthday. But on behalf of myself and my family, I want to wish you and your family a happy birthday and keep doing what you're doing. God bless.
Thank you Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I also like to stand in support of this resolution. Praise God for you, Reverend Jackson. I think about growing up in Cabrini-Green, being a dusty, snotty-nosed, nappy-head kid, and you coming down to the projects. And I remember all of us marching with you, saying, "Up with Hope, Down with Dope. You are somebody. I am somebody." And I remember you leaving and all of us still playing and saying that, running around the neighborhood, not knowing how much that meant for us after seeing you on television doing so many things. And then, you know, coming into this body and touching so many people and seeing you, how you touched them. I mean, and I think about, I think about you as I think about King David, being a giant slayer. You know, how you filled the gap for so many people, how folks have worked for McDonald's Corporation, Shell Corporation, how you opened up the financial industry for people, how you have helped folks to even work in the media. You know, so many doors have been opened because of you, because of your leadership, because of you not having fear, because of your truth to power, wanting to make the plan feel even for everyone. Unfortunately, we still have to continue to move in that direction, because as time goes on, people tend to forget that they need to continue to be open and allow for us to get in those positions and recognize us for who we are instead of what color we are. Reverend Jackson, I want to thank you for inspiring so many people, not just here in the city of Chicago, not just kids from the projects or from down south, but people from all over the world. When you go to other countries and you talk to folks and you tell them you're from Chicago, they'll say something like Oprah Winfrey, Michael Jordan, Jesse Jackson. You are a living legend. We appreciate your legacy, your living legacy. And we appreciate all of the things to come that you're going to do for us. I just want to say thank you. God bless you. Thank you for the inspiration and happy birthday. Thank you.
The Chair, thank you Alderman. The Chair recognizes Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me just to add to this. For me, just being able to see your presence showing up for young people this past year has been amazing. Seeing you march, the March for Us, March this summer, these young people, they just inspire me. I consider myself, I guess, youngish at 36, but even younger generations are following the footsteps. So thank you for leading the way for people like myself to climb heights and think of, and be in places I never thought I could be in. For the first time in Chicago, we have three citywide electeds that are all women of color leading this city for the first time in its history. And it's because of the work that you laid down for us. So thank you Reverend and happy birthday.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anyone else in the body that chooses to speak? I'm having him be the last word. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's just two words that we can use in our conversation around the great Reverend Jackson, and it's thank you. I mean, thank you for creating possibility. Nobody ever thought about being president, even though Shirley did run in the 70s. But no one created the possibility of actually winning until you stepped up. Nobody created the hope in that we can be greater than what we are and where we are today until you stepped up. You've created so much possibility, so much hope. I remember the first time I met you was actually with Mary Thomas, Isaiah Thomas's mother. We were at a Push Excel basketball game back in the 80s, and she introduced me to you. And I remember just feeling like something come over you about being around such a man of greatness, again, creating the possibility of being something greater than what you are. Black folks in this city owe you a debt of gratitude. We wouldn't be sitting in some of these chairs today without the work that you all have done. We would not have seen a black mayor in the city of Chicago without the work that you've done. We would not see the number of elected officials that we have in Cook County, in the state of Illinois, without the work that you have done. So today, we say thank you. Thank you for your life's work. Thank you for all of the nights I know you spent away from your family to help us as a people in this city. So again, all we can say, and to give you your flowers while you are living, is thank you. Thank you, as Alderman Burnett said, about opening the doors of corporate America to the brothers on the west and south sides of this city. Thank you for standing in the gap for everybody. Because there's so many people that should be lining up around this building just to say thank you. If we think about the Chicago Police Department and the fact that in the past that we weren't seeing the promotions amongst sergeants, lieutenants, exempt members, and the work that you've done in helping with the Afro-American Patrol, Miss Lee, and trying to create our piece of the action, thank you. And again, it's the possibility that you created. Without you, there is no Barack. Without you, there's not a whole lot of other folks. So, thank you. And as I see these great people that have assembled to join with you today, a leader amongst leaders of amongst leaders, because everybody in that box got folks behind me, everybody. And you are the man. So thank you for all that you've done to help each and every one of us in this great city.
Any other members of the body that wish to speak? And Reverend, I will join the legion of beautiful, tender, and poignant words that have been spoken by the members of this body, recognizing you and all you have done, your life's work, the place that you hold so deeply in our hearts, the example that you have set over a lifetime of work and more to come. Voting rights, civil rights, a strong, unapologetically black man who understands the importance of diversity and inclusion, who understands that embracing the mosaic of our city and our world, our differences, is what makes us so strong. And for that, we owe you a debt of gratitude and thanks. You have spawned a legion of admirers, but more importantly, a legion of apostles all over the world who understand and have embraced your message of love and unity and hope. "I am somebody" is just not a phrase. It is something that has given all of us incredible strength to recognize that no matter the circumstances into which we are born, that we have a right to expect the best that God has given us. You have shown us that way and that life, and we are forever grateful. Reverend, there are so many things that you will be remembered for and that you are remembered for to this day. But I think one of the greatest legacies is your emphasis on strengthening and supporting our young people. I have been at Push many, many times. And every time that I am there, you feature young people, from the youngest of ages up through the college years, giving them a platform and a voice and making them feel like the world is at their feet if they just take advantage of the opportunities and resources that you have created for them. Many have spoken about your work on Wall Street and in corporate America. You know, people used to say that the thing that corporate America feared most was 60 Minutes is on the line. I think the people, the thing that people feared most is Dr. Jackson. Reverend Jesse Jackson wants to speak with you, Mr. CEO, because you have held corporate America accountable. You have opened up doors of opportunity, not just a pittance and charity, but real jobs, real investments, that have made a magnificent difference in the lives of so many. And for me personally, I am so proud that you have honored me with your counsel and your support and your friendship and your love. And Alderman Irvin, as he always is, is very eloquent. Not only would there not be a Barack, there wouldn't be a Lori Lightfoot as mayor but for the work that you've done over your life emphasizing the empower of voting. Harold knew that. I know that. And I am grateful for everything that you've done to pave the way for us all over the world, in this city, and the people that are here with you today to honor you as we are, understand your importance to them, each and every life here, not just your children, but each and every life of the people in this box have been touched by your grace and your goodness. And you're seeing them and giving them the same kind of hope and inspiration that you've given to generations of folks. Alderman Smith talked about the fact that as a young girl, many, many miles away from here, watching you and your work and being inspired, I know there are so many who would say exactly the same, that Jesse Jackson is a man of God, a man of peace, a man of love, a man of unity. And we are so honored and grateful that you live in this city and that we get to witness your great work on a daily basis. So on behalf of our city, on behalf of little girls and boys who grew up just like me,
I move passage of this resolution in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
I now move we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Ladies and gentlemen, next up on our agenda is communications.
A series of communications from her honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with the 2022 revenue ordinance, your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with the fiscal year 2022 tax levy, your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the chief financial officer, I transmit here with an ordinance amending various bond ordinances and authorizing the issuance of various new bonds. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a financial assistance to Chicago Lighthouse Residence for LLC for a new affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing financial assistance to Chicago Lighthouse Residence 9 LLC for a new affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Conservatory Apartments LLC for a new multifamily affordable housing development. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Chicago Neighborhood Initiatives, Inc., for site preparation, environmental remediation of city lots. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with the 2022 management ordinance, your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of budget director, I transmit here with the resolution amending the salary resolution. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Lady and gentle, ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with the 22, 2022 municipal code corrections ordinance. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the allocation of motor fuel tax funds. Your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with a fund 925 amendment, your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the budget director, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority and Cook County for allocation of motor fuel tax funds. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing a favorable tax status for property located at 3900 South Normal Avenue. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the budget scope of services and service provider agreements for various special service areas. Your favorable consideration, these ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital technology development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a multifamily loan agreement with Lazarus Renewal LLC for the rehabilitation of Lazarus Apartments. Your favorite, your favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Favorable consideration, these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on housing and real estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the commissioner of planning and development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of open space and PAC fees, funds to reimburse neighbor's space for the acquisition, site preparation, and fence of lauding to expand the Chicago Fire Marks. Favorable consideration, this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on special events, cultural affairs, and recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration, these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the committee on economic capital technology development. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the city council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to respective subjects designation as follows. Notification designate, designation of Eileen Valskaz as addition proxy to FX signature mayor to certain documents. Office of Inspector General's audit report regarding public housing commissions, administration of public commissioning as required under Chicago Energy and Conservation Code. Office of Inspector General's second audit report regarding Chicago Fire Department's fire and medical response times, compliance with National Fire Protection Association standards. Office of Inspector General Audit's report regarding city council committee's spending and employee administration. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the city council that all those matters which were considered by the city council at the regular meeting held on September 20th, 2021, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on October 14th, 2021 by being printed in full text and pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of city council, city of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the city council that the ordinance authorizing the refunding of special assessment improvement bond series 2002 Lake Shore East Project through the issuance of special assessment improvement bonds refunding series 2021 Lake Shore East Project, which was passed by the city council on September 14th, 2021, which were requested to be published in special pamphlet, was it published in special pamphlet form on September 20th, 2021. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports regarding city council action. Zoning reclassification of particular areas to refer to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards, claims against the city of Chicago to refer to the committee on finance, and correction of September 14th, 2021, city council journal proceedings, which is referred to the committee on committees and roles.
Next up, committee reports. Hold on one second, Chairman Wagaspack. Madam Clerk?
I just want to take this opportunity really quick. We have an outstanding Office of City Clerk team member who has been with the City Clerk's office for 36 years. 36 years serving in the same position. Gary Hopper, stand up, Gary. Gary Hopper. And we just want to commend him for his service to the city of Chicago. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir. Yes, absolutely. All right. Chairman Wagaspack, the committee on finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the city council's committee on finance, which met on October 13th, 2021. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an agreement for the issuance of up to $12 million in multifamily housing revenue tax exempt bonds to Covent Apartments LLC, Covent NHPF Manager LLC for acquisition and rehabilitation of a rental apartment complex at 2653 North Clark Street, providing for financing and reimbursement of eligible costs from bond revenues in the 43rd Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, Alderwoman Smith, I believe, wanted to. But if no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move to concur with the recommendation of the committee by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Lasbada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins is a yes. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is a yes. Alderman King. Alderman King is a yes. Alderman Harrison. Alderman Harrison is a yes. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is a yes. Alderman Mitchell. Alderman Mitchell is a yes. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is a yes. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal is a yes. Alderman Zlowski Garza. Zlowski Garza is a yes. Alderman Thompson. Alderman Thompson is a yes. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Cardenas is a yes. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is a yes. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is a yes. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Lopez is a yes. Alderman Coleman. Alderman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Moore. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is a yes. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is a yes. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Tichul Lopez. Tichul Lopez is a yes. Alderman Maldonado. Maldonado is a yes. Alderman Burnett. Burnett is a yes. Alderman Urban. Alderman Urban is a yes. Alderman Talafaro. Talafaro is a yes. Alderman Reboyas. Reboyas is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Cardona is a yes. Alderman Wagispack. Wagispack is a yes. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Austin. Austin is a yes. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Ramirez Rosa is a yes. Alderman Vega. Alderman Spassato. Spassato is a yes. Alderman Nugent. Nugent is a yes. Alderman... Oh, sorry, Alderman Metz. Sorry about that. Metz is a yes. Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez is a yes. Alderman Apolitano. Apolitano is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Smith. Smith is a yes. Alderman Tunny. Tunny is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. Alderman Capelman. Alderman Martin. Martin is a yes. Alderman Osterman. Osterman is a yes. Alderman Haddon. Haddon is a yes. Alderman Silverstein. Silverstein is a yes.
By the yeas or forty-seven, the nays are zero. Alderman Thompson on a motion for reconsideration.
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those, all those opposed? I think the nays have it. The motion for reconsideration is denied. Chairman Wagaspack?
Thompson pushing it uphill. Item number two is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an agreement for the issuance of up to $24 million in multifamily housing revenue tax exempt bonds with supporting funding, loan borrower, and regulatory agreements to Park Boulevard 3B LLC for construction of residential mixed income buildings on Chicago Housing Authority property at 43 West 36th Street, 3603 and 3607 South Federal Street, 37th Street and Federal Street, with lease to be issued to Interfaith Housing Development Corporation or affiliate in the 3rd Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three will be held in committee at the request of Alderwoman King.
So ordered.
Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute the 60th amending agreement with Summercore 504 Incorporated to continue as service provider administrator and authorizing the increased grant funds to Devon Western, Tuie Western, and Western Avenue Rock Island districts through tax increment financing funds, including small business improvement funds, or SPIF, or other available funds in the 40th and 50th wards, the 49th and 50th wards, and the 19th and 34th wards, respectively. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to execute the Second Amendment to near-north tax... Pardon me. Near-north tax incremental financing redevelopment project and plan regarding estimated dates of completion and retirement of debt in the 2nd and 27th wards. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing so, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, item number six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Board of Education to provide up to $180,000 in tax increment financing funds for replacement of the existing fire alarm system at Henry R. Clissold Elementary School at 2350 West 110th Place in the 19th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call on the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of up to $3.725 million in tax increment financing funds for roof replacement, masonry repairs, and chimney stack reduction at Charles and Holden Elementary at 1104 West 31st Street in the 11th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee on finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of up to $4.7 million in tax increment financing funds for roof replacement and targeted masonry repairs at Skinner North Classical Elementary School at 640 West Scott Street in the 27th Ward. This item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote on the committee on finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of up to $750,000 in tax increment financing funds for structural reduction of the chimney stack at Mark T. Skinner West Branch Campus at 225 South Aberdeen Street in the 25th Ward. This item also received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Doesn't I like to be added to the first vote of the finance committee first made a favorable roll call vote?
The record will reflect your favorable vote.
Madam President, item number 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Board of Education for the provision of up to $220,000 in tax increment financing funds for replacement of the existing fire alarm system at Charles Sumner Elementary Math and Science Community Academy at 4320 West Fifth Avenue in the 24th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the authority to enter into and execute the 61st amending agreement with Summercore 504 Incorporated to amend the Small Business Improvement Fund program rules to allow for temporary eligibility of taverns, bars, hotels, and motels in response to economic hardships experienced due to COVID-19. The item received favorable approval by the committee. If no one wishes to speak on the matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the committee on finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Dow, who wishes to be recorded as a no.
With that exception, hearing no other objection, so ordered. The chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you. I would also like to be recorded as voting no on that, on that particular item.
The record will still reflect.
Madam President, item number 12 is regarding monthly settlements through the Law Department. It will be placed on file with the clerk. Items 13 and 14 consist of authorizations for the payment of various small claims against the city and denials of payment of various small claims against the city. If there's no objection, I ask these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 15 is an order authorizing a tag day permit for the Chicago Youth Programs in Wrigleyville on November 20 of 2021. If there's no objection, I ask that these items be placed on the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And item number 16 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance authorizing provision of tax increment financing funds and expedited negotiated acquisition of parcels or quick take for 5206, 5220, and 5224 West Chicago Avenue in the 37th Ward. The item received favorable approval by the committee with the exception, excuse me, if no one wishes to speak on the matter, first I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider with the exception of Alderman Beal who wishes to be recorded as no on this item.
With that exception, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dowell.
Madam President and members of the City Council reporting for your Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which met on October 13, 2021, the Committee recommends passage of the following items. A communication from the Honorable Lori Lightfoot Mayor appointing Aileen Velazquez as Chief Procurement Officer of the Department of Procurement Services. If no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. I can assure you, ladies and gentlemen of this body, that now Chief Procurement Officer Aileen Velazquez coming back home, having spent a brief stint at the Procurement Department back in the early 2000s, is a consummate professional, worlds of experience in both government and the private sector, understands the magnitude of the challenge that she faces, but is more than able and equipped to do so. So Chief Procurement Officer Velazquez, welcome to the Cabinet.
And item number two is a communication from the Honorable Lori E. Lightfoot Mayor appointing Cole Stahler as Commissioner of the Department of Streets and Sanitation.
If you would, give us a moment so that we can have Commissioner Stahler and his family take the box. Please proceed.
I anticipate that someone will want to speak on this matter, but if no one wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
There are a number of your colleagues who wish to speak.
I assume.
Just take some of these early names down. All right, let's start with Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. What a fine appointment you've made. And that's in Cole Stahler. As I've said in our committee hearing regarding Cole, he knows every facet of streets and sanitation. He's been in every department of streets and bureau in streets and sanitation. So what an appointment you have made, Madam Mayor. For such a person that have stood behind every commissioner that have headed this department, gave them the go-ahead, gave them the fuel that they needed to run a good department. So for that, Cole Stahler, I said it before, she couldn't have picked a better man. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spisato.
Thank you, Madam President. Cole, best wishes to your family. You guys are going to have to be awful understanding about what's going on. It's going to be an intense, intense, demanding job. So I'm sure you know what's in store for your husband and your dad. We appreciate him. We love him. We look really forward to working with you. Mayor, couldn't have made a better appointment. 100% behind us. Thank you. God bless Cole. God bless Streets and San. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spisato. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, Cole, I told you in the hallway that I gave you a pass on your confirmation because I think that was the best way to show my appreciation for what you do. I have no questions for you because you have shown yourself after decades of service, and I think it's a true testament to your parents and family, just the kind of Chicagoan that you are. We look forward to working with you. I know my residents have benefited greatly from you, as have all of our residents. And I would be remiss, I just did not say that it's a testament to you as well, Madam President, to recognize the leaders within our city's departments and to promote them upward. So thank you for bringing Cole to the head of this department. Thank you, Cole, for saying yes. Thank you to the family for probably saying yes. And thank you to your parents for making you the man that you are today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Cole, welcome. I'm thrilled about the opportunity to work with you. You've been fabulous in your other roles. I can't see that it'll be any different now as you move on up the ladder, just a lot more responsibility. So thank you again, and I'm excited about having the chance to work with you.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman Metz.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise in supporting Cole. I appreciate the work that you've already done. Can already thought that you would be confirmed today, but congratulations. On behalf of the residents in the 37th Ward, the Streets and Sanitation team is just the best. Having a relationship where you can work with them and knowing them, and they know what they're supposed to do. So they don't do it, we know who to call. But congratulations to you and your family, and we look forward to doing even more work and looking how we can better make it better. There's always room for improvement. So that's what I'm looking for the next step to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Reboyas.
Thank you, Madam President. Cole is one who worked in Streets and San for a few decades. I noticed I didn't say years. I congratulate you. This is an excellent choice by the mayor. You know the system. It's easy. However, you spend a little more time. Family, thank you for sharing him with us. He'll probably see you in 2022, but nevertheless, you're the right person for the job today. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Reboyas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sotlowski Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, this is a wonderful appointment. I couldn't think of a better one. Thank you to your family, to Alderman Matty O'Shea. He might be a 19th warder, but he was born and bred and raised in the 10th Ward, and don't forget it. Thank you, Cole. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too rise in support of this nomination. I think this is an excellent appointment. Cole is somebody who is always willing to pick up the phone, always willing to go the extra mile. And I said yesterday a story when he had first gotten appointed at, as the interim. I saw him in the hallway and I said, hey, you know, can you give me the number of your deputy? Who's going to be your deputy so I can reach out and call him? And he said, no. I want you to continue to call me to make sure that the items that you got going in your ward get done. You cannot ask more from a leader than that. And so Cole, looking forward to working with you. You've already hit the ground running. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I too rise in support of this. You actually showed up today. So that's a great start. You know, your longevity with the department, all the different positions that you've had have served you well, have served the residents of the 5th Ward well, and we are happy to welcome you as the new superintendent. Congratulations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Terrific choice. Cole, you exemplify the promotion of from the ground up. You started out working your butt off and you earned this position just by listening to our colleagues here how happy we are that you're in this position. And to your family, thank you for lending him to us. It's a tough job, but he's the right man for it or the right person for it, and we appreciate that he's going to take this on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. Cole, thank you for the work that you're doing. We expect you to continue to do good work and to lead that department further and take it to the next level. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to commend you on this great appointment. Again, it's one of these appointments that's totally unanimous by this whole entire council. I'm not going to repeat everything that I said yesterday, but while I was, after I finished speaking, something came to mind. And you're a special person, Cole. I believe this in my heart because I often look at people and wonder, do they represent sometimes what their name is? And I think it's very few people in this world that does that. And when they do it, it's done because it's in them already. And so I had, so somebody brought that to my attention some years ago, and they said, David, you are definitely a man after God's own heart. And they showed me that, and that was the meaning of David, and without even really knowing that. And I always chased him. And when I looked up Stahler, it was the origin of the word stalwart. You are true stalwart. You are loyal. You are reliable, and you are a hard worker. And what I'm excited about it is sort of what Alderman Napolitano touched on is that you started from the beginning, just serving, not looking for the position, not looking for the title, but just serving. Some people get appointed or anything like that because sometimes political reasons or whatever. You earned this. You earned it, and you wasn't even looking for it. And those are the people that we want, not only in government, but that's definitely serving in the public sector. Truly appreciate you and look forward to continuing to work with you, and thank you for you all sharing him with us. I don't know if these are your parents or not, but thank you. Thank you all for raising such an awesome stalwart.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a speech that was going to last an hour long, but sorry, Cole. We just had a really prominent man come in here and got all the attention that he deserved, by the way. But congratulations, and yes, your wife, dearest, she's going to miss you this winter. It's going to be tough. We're going to be calling you nonstop, as you know, as we do, obviously. I don't need anything right now, but I sure will need something later. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it is an honor to be able to cast this vote in favor of the Commissioner designate. And as Alderman Sotlowski Garza indicated, he has deep, deep roots here in the city of Chicago, generational roots. His grandfather was a police hero and won the Lambert Tree Medal, the highest award that is given to a police officer for bravery above and beyond the call of duty in this city. And if there was a medal for above and beyond the call of duty in the Department of Streets and Sanitation, there is a man that would get it by unanimous vote. And I have personal information to share with you. My daughter Jennifer, who was an Assistant Corporation Counsel, worked so closely with him on environmental hotspots all around the city of Chicago that if I didn't cast this vote yes today, I couldn't have a happy family life. Congratulations. And isn't it wonderful too to have your family here with you on this happy occasion? So they can know how greatly respected and admired their loved one is. That's a rare opportunity for a family to share something good and solid and worthwhile. Congratulations. May God bless you and your entire family with good health and success for many years to come. Take care.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. The Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Madam President. I first wanted to congratulate you on this great appointment. It's always good, Cole, to recognize someone that's come up through the ranks. I really appreciated our conversation at the Ward Office, you sharing stories about your mom and dad. Really speaks to the character. Wanted to thank your family in advance for the hard work that is going to go into this job. Congratulations. I look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Quinn. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise and congratulate you on an excellent choice in the new Commissioner to lead this department. And it's fantastic to see somebody from within the department, which I also think says a lot about that department. To have people that come through, come from within. And Cole, I know everyone talked about how, what an excellent job you're doing throughout all of the wards, and I appreciate it. And there's a quote of President Lincoln that I like, which says, "I like to see a man proud of the place in which he lives, and I'd like to see a man live so that his place is proud of him." We're all proud of the work you've done. We're all looking forward to working with you. And where you live is in Chicago, not the 10th Ward, the 19th Ward. You're welcome to come down to the 11th Ward anytime you want, but we appreciate everything you do for the entire city. Thank you, Cole.
Thank you, Alderman Thompson. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also congratulate you and thank you for this fine choice for a Commissioner. I think having somebody from the ranks that understands the plight of the laborers, the tree trimmers, the street sweepers is something that benefits our city and allows everyone in Chicago to have better services. I want to thank you for that. To future Commissioner Stahler, I want to thank you so much because you've always been a straight shooter, and clearly you have an understanding of all the different components of Streets and Sanitation that we need to move our city forward. So I want to thank you for that. To your family, I'd like to apologize along with the rest of the council, and I hope that it's some small solace that you have the trimmers of trees, the cleanest of streets, and the cleanest of sidewalks during the winter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dowell.
Yes, if no one else is on your list, Mayor, I just want to.
I have a long.
You have a long list?
List. All right. I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you in your black cleanup. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspata.
I'll be brief. Commissioner Stahler, about to be Commissioner Stahler. Really has been a pleasure even thus far in this short time. I'll say two things. You're a really clear, straightforward, and honest communicator, and that can be too rare in the work that we do. And I know that you're fighting for the resources that your department needs, and I appreciate that. Because when you fight for your department, it's our whole city that wins. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Dowell, you should know better because everybody knows if you don't say something, you may not get that tree trimmed. You may not get that sidewalk done.
Bunch of your colleagues are jumping up in the back now.
You know, so everybody's going to say something today. I just wanted to say congratulations, Cole. Your Honor, this is a great appointment, well deserved. We met some 23 years ago, and it's been a pleasure to watch you grow in this position. And you know, you are well deserved of the hard work that you have put in for the people. that you have put in for the people of this great city. You may have grown up in the 10th Ward and you may live in the 19th Ward, but your hairstyle comes out of the 9th Ward. And so we all know that. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
I think that's one of those mic drop moments, but we will move on to Alderman Shea. O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand in support of this appointment. Excellent choice. I gotta say, Cole, you managed to get the entire City Council to agree on something and that alone is impressive. I've known Cole Staller a long time. He was a year ahead of me in high school. And I'm not going to tell any of those stories. But the job you have done coming up through the ranks of Streets and Sanitation, you are a man of your word. You look people in the eye. You tell them what the score is, even when you're not giving them the news they want to hear. And that is a testament to your family. You raised a good man and that's why we're here today. I think it's so terrific that your family is here to see this, that this many people think so highly of you. And I just look forward to your years of service. I just hope everybody here today is appreciative of you when we get our first 18 inch snowstorm in about six weeks. Remember that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Madam President. Cole, like all my colleagues have said, thank you for all the sacrifices you have made throughout your career and the sacrifices that you and your family are about to undertake. Obviously, you're going to have a lot of responsibilities in this new position, but as everybody in this room believes, you are going to do an excellent job. One of some of the greatest compliments anyone can get us from their colleagues or their peers. And anytime I hear your name spoke, everybody says the same thing. It all comes back. Cole has paid his dues. He's deserving of that appointment. So for that, I want to congratulate you and thank you for all you have done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Gardner. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wegasback.
Thanks, Madam President. Alderman O'Shea, it was actually snowing in Montana yesterday, so I think he's got a little less time. You've got about three minutes left to run. Just kidding. But congratulations, Commissioner. We know that you're going to take all the little calls from all of us on a daily basis and we appreciate that, you know, up until late in the wee hours of the morning. It's a very difficult job and I know you're up to it based on all the experiences that we've had with you. You're going to take Streets and Sand and transform it, I hope, in the vision that the mayor and all of us are looking for on everything from the recycling, composting, everything that you talked about in that budget hearing, to really transform the city and take us into a new era. So we look forward to working with you and wish you and your family all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wegasback. The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to congratulate you on making this excellent appointment. Commissioner, congratulations. I've had the pleasure of working with you for some time now and I'm looking forward to working with you in your new capacity. I wish you luck and also your family luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to stand in support of this appointment. We're really grateful for the service, the amount of time that you spend with the city and are really hopeful with the level of professionalism and quick responses that we get so far. So congratulations and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I also want to congratulate Cole. It's kind of downhill from here, right? All these people saying all this great stuff before it snows, right? Before the first snowstorm. But you're prepared for this. I appreciate you reaching out to me in times when I needed something in our community. And likewise, there's 50 people here that know their neighbors like the back of their hand and are here to help you in whatever we can do. So good luck with the new position. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hadd.
Thank you. Congratulations on this appointment and Cole and to your family. I've appreciated getting to know you. I look forward to your service. And I'll just say, in this time where I believe there are new and can we use the unprecedented word again? Challenges in public service. I really appreciate, and so do the residents of the 49th Ward, your recommitment in taking on this leadership. We need it. We look forward to it. And thank you to your family for allowing us to have that additional commitment over these next several years, hopefully many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hadd. And the Chair recognizes Alderman Coleman.
President, Cole, you are one of the coolest people in the city of Chicago. We're meeting your beautiful wife, son and daughter, your dad, whom I'm convinced is your brother, and mom over there, your other sister. Just thank you in advance, as I told you all back there. Congratulations and I'm sorry at the same time. And thanks for always being a phone call away, even before the title, before this position, especially in the 16th Ward as we're going to attack and tackle those 2,000 vacant lots this coming season. Congrats.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. Any other members of the body? Alderman Burnett and then.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd just like to rise in support of this appointment. First of all, Madam President, I want to thank you for not looking outside of the City Council or outside of the city or outside of Streets and Sanitation and bringing somebody that's in-house that's going to help keep the morale going on with our Streets and Sand. Our guys went through a lot during the COVID and Cole, you was right there. You did a fantastic job. I know it was challenging for a lot of your folks. Your family should be very proud of you. Thank you very much for taking this step and becoming a Commissioner. We really appreciate it. Everybody knows where your heart is. I know all the guys who work for you do and that's why everybody's rooting for you. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nugent.
First of all, congratulations on this tremendous appointment. Cole, you're nothing but a class act and really just tremendous to work with. I could not be more supportive of you in this appointment. So congratulations and to your family. Sorry, but thank you for just again, everything you do. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Nugent. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Madam President, I thought you forgot all about me and I'm Mr. Streets and Sanitation.
Never, never could forget about you.
And of course, Alderman Harris. Hands down, Mayor, best choice, hands down. Cole is every word of the Boy Scouts motto and trustworthy and loyal is the first. He's a great guy. I can't say anything, nothing bad about him, period. We've worked together for a very long time and I appreciate, he always asks how, what do I think about something? Well, how do I feel about this? And I want us to always continue to have that relationship. Thank you, Cole. Thank you, Madam President, for your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Curtis. Any other members of the body that wish to speak? If I may indulge, when the snow falls, when the tree falls, when the garbage stinks, take this moment of adulation. Put it in your pocket because you're going to need it in those days. You know, there's some people that you meet that immediately put you at ease and give you the comfort that they are up to the task. That's Cole Staller. Good man, good leader, understands the moment and the necessity of making sure that this department is as strong as it possibly can be to meet the needs of our residents. For many people, there are very few departments that are the face of government like Streets and Sanitation. It makes me incredibly proud to be able to promote someone who's come up through the ranks. But not only that, ladies and gentlemen, has a vision for where he wants to take this department. The very first substantive conversation we had about him taking this position, he came in with a plan to expand the workforce by hiring returning residents. That speaks a lot to the character of this man. Has put together, I think, a tremendous leadership team and talking about how he can make sure that those who are younger in their years in the department have the opportunity to step up and lead so they someday will be prepared to lead this great department. I can't say enough about him. And I too join what others have said. It's a great testament to his parents that they are here in this moment to recognize that the son that they raised and nurtured is met with such universal acclaim as being a good, solid, steady leader and a true public servant. And yes, of course, we have to thank his family who already been sharing Cole with us for many, many years but are prepared to step up in this moment as he steps up to do more in service of our city. So thank you so much, Alderman Dow. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. I knew that this was going to go a little long. Thank you. I just wanted to say to you, Mayor Lightfoot, that your selection of Cole Staller was an outstanding decision. That's been said. It's rare that I can take a communication through the Budget and Government Operations Committee where there is unanimous, unanimous support for an appointment like Cole Staller. I won't repeat all the positive comments about Cole, but I do have like three things I want to say about him. One, I appreciate Cole because he is a straight, what I call a straight no chaser person. He says he's going to do something. He gives you his word and he's going to do it, right? And if he can't do it, he's going to let you know that he can't do it. The second thing is that Cole is a man that knows the nooks and crannies of every neighborhood in the city of Chicago. And that is something that we all appreciate as stewards of our ward. And then lastly, Cole is always looking for a thoughtful solution to the problems that we may have. And he does it in a way that takes into consideration the needs of the community, the needs of the administration and what's best for the taxpayers of the city of Chicago. And I appreciate that. So I renew my motion to move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Congratulations and welcome to the Cabinet.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, Vice Chair Mitchell.
Madam President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Wednesday, September 22, 2021, the committee held a virtual meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Item 1 through 18 are a series of appointments and reappointments to various special service areas. These items were voted on collectively. Reappointment of Priyanka Patel as member of the Special Service Area Number 23, the Clark Street-Lincoln Park Commission. Reappointment of Juanita A. Love and Mason Fakaro Fakory as member of the So Special Service Area Number 32, Auburn Gresham Commission. Reappointment of Nicholas A. Hassan as member of the Special Service Area Number 31, Greater Ravenswood Commission. Reappointment of Nadine M. Karin as member of Special Service Area Number 22, Andersonville Commission. Reappointment of Charlotte A. Walters as member of the Special Service Area Number 19, Howard Street Commission. Appointment of Karla Del Rosario as member of Special Service Area Number 2, Belmont Central Commission. Reappointment of Jennifer R. Clark as member of Special Service Area Number 54, Sheridan Road Commission. Appointment of Mohamed Ramiz as member of Special Service Area Number 43, Devon Avenue Commission. Reappointment of Ayesha Amina Karin as member of Special Service Area Number 42, 71 Stony Commission. Appointment of Tiffany Joswiak as member of Special Service Area Number 35, Lincoln Avenue Commission. Reappointment of Carl D. Sullivan, Joshua A. Reichman and Noreen Keeney as member of Special Service Area Number 34, Uptown Commission. Reappointment of Nicholas P. Koziac as member of Special Service Area Number 24, Clark Street Commission. Appointment of Joseph Matholom as member of Special Service Area Number 20, Southwestern Avenue Commission. Appointment of Juan Martinez and reappointment of Salvador Benitez as member of Special Service Area Number 10, Back of the Yards Commission. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 19 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of tax levy budget and service provider agreement for Special Service Area Number 38, North Center Commission, year 2021. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 20 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on enlargement of Special Service Area Number 60, Albany Park, authorization of additional services, extension of tax levy period to 2035 and determination of tax levy rate. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 21 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on establishment of Special Service Area Number 79, determination of 10-year tax levy rate, selection of special service for approximate taxable area of West Lawrence Avenue from North Knox Avenue to North Pulaski Road, North Pulaski Road from West Ainsley Street to North Elston Avenue and North Elston Avenue from West Lawrence Avenue to West Harding Avenue. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 22 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on establishment of Special Service Area Number 77, determination of 10-year tax levy, selection of special services for approximate taxable area of West Madison Street from North Kenton Avenue to North Hamlin Boulevard and North Pulaski Road from West Congress Parkway to West Lake Street. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 23 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on establishment of Special Service Area Number 52-2021, determination of tax levy rate, taxable area and selection.
One moment, Vice Chair Mitchell, one moment. Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your voices down. Please proceed, Alderman Mitchell.
Item 20, repeating, item 23 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on establishment of Special Service Area Number 52-2021, determination of tax levy rate, taxable area and selection of special service for area known as East 51st Street from approximate Dr. Martin Luther King Drive west to Metro Railroad tracks. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 24 on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on extension of tax levy period, increase of tax levy rate and authorization of certain services for Special Service Area Number 23, Clark Street-Lincoln Park Commission. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Item 25 is on the agenda is an ordinance in support of public hearings on the extension of tax levy period, increase of tax levy rate and expansion of certain services for Special Service Area Number 55, 111th Kedzie Commission. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Next up, the Committee on Immigration and Refugee Rights. Chairman Rubios.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. Reporting for your Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights at the meeting. Reporting for your Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, hotel meeting on September 22nd, 2021, I hereby recommend the following for passage. A resolution introduced by Mayor Lightfoot, R. Two Zero Two One Dash Nine Nine Eight, resolution condemning gender-based violence in Afghanistan. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, I reserve the right to close.
To wish to speak to this resolution. I will just say, support this resolution because as we've seen, in the tragic circumstances following the US withdrawal from the country of Afghanistan already, the Taliban has come back in full force and taking away the rights of women and girls who have lived for twenty years in a nation that accepted their rightful place as co-equal individuals under the eyes of the law of Afghanistan. Every single day, their rights are being violated, and they are being subordinated by the rule of the Taliban. We have to be a country that stands for something different and better, and that's why I think this resolution is important in time.
And Madam President, the Taliban forces have deprived Afghan Afghanistan women, girls, and the LGBTQ individuals their essential human rights and even their lives. Survivors of gender-based violence have sought safety in domestic violence shelters that were organized by headquarters in Chicago and Illinois. And as we all know, Chicago is a welcoming city and has been a haven for refugees escaping war, political violence, and those who are seeking better life for their families. Madam President, if there is no objection, I move for passage by the last favorable vote on the Committee on Finance associated with the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety, Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian Traffic Safety for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Before the committee, there were one hundred ninety-five items. There were one hundred ninety-three routine items that passed and two routine traffic items that did not pass. I move passage of these items in the honor of us. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro.
President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety for which a meeting was held on October 13th, 2021. There was one item before the committee which the committee does recommend to do pass. Item number one was ordinance 2021 Dash Four One Three One, Amendment of Municipal Code Two Dash Eighty Four Dash Zero Three Zero, adding police board power to hear appeals by individuals to remove their status identification from certain criminal information systems. With the exception of, well, I apologize, if there's no objections or anyone wishing to speak, I move for the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to defer and publish item one from the Committee on Public Safety. Alder Sawyer Lopez Taylor, Sixcho Lopez, Rodriguez Sanchez Hadden, Rodriguez and Ramirez Rosa, join me in this motion.
The item will be deferred and published.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chairman Brookins.
Good afternoon, Madam President. Reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on October 13th, 2021, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages two through nineteen include two hundred and thirteen ordinances for grants of privileges introduced by local aldermen from wards one through five, seven, nine through eleven, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, nineteen through twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five through twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-eight through forty, and forty-two through fifty. On page twenty includes sixteen ordinances for canopies introduced by local aldermen from wards one, four, twenty-three, twenty-seven, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-seven. On pages, on pages twenty-one through twenty-three include four amendments and twenty-one aldermen for miscellaneous items introduced by local aldermen from wards six, eight, sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-seven, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-eight through forty-one, forty-three, forty-seven, and forty-nine. Your Honor, I think at this point, and I don't know if I want to do it now or later, Alderman LaSpada would like to speak to the item regarding scooters.
And speaking on behalf of an ordinance.
One moment, sir. The Chair recognizes Alderman LaSpada.
My apologies for being out of order. My gratitude to Chairman Brookins for his leadership on this work as we really are moving to be the kind of city that presents every sustainable and equitable form of mobility for constituents that we can. We need to be a city that is not rolling back on our former patterns where being a single person in the car is really the most expensive congested way to get around. But we also know that just providing these licenses isn't a path to equity in itself. We know that proximity doesn't necessarily mean use. So I'm glad that the administration that was CDOT were committed to the infrastructure that makes these licenses work for a whole of our community so that you're not subjected to the violence of being hit by a car or the violence related to public safety concerns in a lot of neighborhoods that we would hope to see the adoption of these kinds of mobility tools. But yes, very grateful to stand in support of the license ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, we also have Alderman Moore and Alderman Lopez who would like to speak.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President, and I too would like to thank Alderman of the Twenty-First Ward, Howard Brookins, for his leadership on this. But I have to be a no today. The reason why we do pilots, and I agree with everything Alderman LaSpada has said, let me just say I echo that, but the reason why we do pilots is because we have to make sure it works. When I was in corporate America, anytime we changed computer programs or new programs, we piloted those. We ran them until they worked because you could not implement it and run a business while they were not working. And in my opinion, this company has not proven to me that this system works in terms of what we needed to do to make our communities not only safer, but also that it's not a eyesore and a problem to our community. What I don't want to be stuck with is that the taxpayers being stuck with paying for docking stations sometime in the future. I think this company, as they will make money, has had an opportunity to come and put docking stations in for these scooters. And with that along, it's a resource drain on our ward office, and I cannot, in good conscience, put that on not only my staff, but also the residents of the ward having to constantly call in about another problem. So I'm hoping we can get this right. I'm going to be a no on this, and I hope that this, they come before the, at least on a quarterly basis, the Committee on Contract Oversight and Equity, and let us know what they're doing in terms of not only their process and procedures, but also their hiring in the different capacities as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I too rise in opposition to this amendment to Municipal Code Title Nine with regards to scooter sharing. During this pilot, to echo the words of my colleague Alderman Moore, we saw the good, the bad, and the ugly in this program. My residents called my office weekly about these scooters being tied up to their disability poles and to everywhere else, being an eyesore in the neighborhoods. Now I understand that this is the way of the future, that we're doing more to get cars off and give our residents alternatives, and I appreciate that. But we have to balance the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And to be perfectly honest, nobody from CDOT reached out to my concerns when I sent this to rules months ago. Nobody has tried to see how we can work together except for the lobbyists, but they're not in a predicament to change and offer substitutes. Everyone who should have cared about the concerns that we had in our neighborhoods, particularly the Fifteenth Ward, was uninterested in talking. So I'm uninterested in moving forward. I have concerns that we're going to continue to see a rise of where I have to go out or send someone from my staff to go out to report these issues to 311, to try to hold them accountable, to focus on being the scooter police, when I have more than enough to do in my ward as alderman. I hope that if this passes today, these concerns do get revisited. I hope that the administration and CDOT will listen to what our concerns are to tweak this before we go full-blown. But if that's not the case, at least I know my conscience to my residents will be clear that we try to address these issues before they continue to be a nuisance in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Chair recognizes Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to thank my colleagues who supported me on this and the colleagues who don't see it at this point. I believe that if we're going to talk the talk, we need to walk the walk, and that, one, our environment is slowly dying, and we really need to do anything that we can to go to electrification, whether that is EVs that I know Alderman Martin is really passionate about, doing these micro-mobility vehicles which will allow people to get to on short jocks, point A to point B without polluting or having additional Ubers and Lifts driving around the city of Chicago, alleviating congestion. I do share the same concerns that my colleagues have about the electric vehicles and including the bikes being littered across the city of Chicago. There is a learning curve, and there are going to be some growing pains, and I'm not going to tell anybody that we're going to get it right immediately, but it is a work in progress. There are steps in this ordinance, the ordinance that will create this, that will allow the commissioners to rein these things in, but ultimately, I believe that we are stepping in the right direction for our city and for the environment. So I want to thank you all for that. On page twenty-four includes four vacation ordinances located in the Twelve, Nineteenth, Twenty-Fifth, and Twenty-Seventh Ordinance. Except with respect to the vacation ordinance in the Twenty-Seventh Ward, Alderman Thompson recuses himself from voting on that based on Rule Fourteen in that him or a member in his law firm has represented someone involved with respect to that ordinance. He did not participate in the committee meeting as he was already offered a Zoom call. If there's no objections, I move passage of these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and unsuccessful motion to reconsider, except I'm asking that Alderman Moore, Alderman Dow, Alderman Osterman, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Riley, and Alderman Smith be recorded as voting no. And Alderman Madanalo.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins. I'm sorry, sir.
Hopkins, no. Well, they said they didn't want one, that's all right. Alderman Bill, Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Madanalo also.
With those no votes now on the record and no further objection, hearing no further objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report, and thank you all. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Brookins. Next up, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, Chairman Tunney.
Madam President and members of the City Council, presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on October 12th of 2021. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number A. Two Oh Two One Dash One Five Eight, the appointment of Carlos Pinero as a member of the Chicago Plan Commission. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Finance Committee report and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one contains document number Zero Two Zero Two One Dash Four One Three Four, the Amendment of Municipal Code Eighteen Through Twenty Nine, Articles One through Fifteen Regarding Plumbing Provisions. I move passage of this item by the same motion. If there is no objection with the deference to Alderman Riley, he would like to say a few words on this plumbing code.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to congratulate you and Marlene Hopkins in the Department of Buildings for all the work that you did in collaboration with the Plumbers Local 130, President Coyne. I think this is going to have an amazing impact on improving affordable housing stock in the city of Chicago by making these building materials more affordable. So I just wanted to applaud you for making these much-needed changes and for the work you did with the Plumbers Union. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, really today I want to commend you for working with 130 and of course sending Marlene to sit at the table and get stuff done like only Marlene can get stuff done and make it plain for everybody. And again, I want to thank 130 for their cooperation and working with us as we changed the code for them. So thank you. Marlene was just simply fabulous during this whole process, and I just can't thank her enough for working with us and representing you as the city. Thank you.
Any other members of the body wish to speak? Chairman Tunney?
I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages one through fifteen contain various map amendments in the first, second, fourth, sixth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirtieth, thirty-second, thirty-third, thirty-sixth, thirty-ninth, fortieth, forty-third, forty-seventh, and fiftieth wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that Alderman Lopez would like to be recorded as voting no on document number Zero Two Zero Two One Three Nine Six Two for the address commonly known as Thirty Nine Hundred Southwestern Avenue.
So noted and hearing no objection, so ordered.
Pages fifteen contains three historical landmark designations. The first in the Fourth Ward for the Muddy Waters Home located at Forty Three Thirty Nine South Lake Park Avenue. Next, in the Eleventh Ward, the Monastery of the Holy Cross Building located at Thirty One Oh One through Thirty One Eleven South Aberdeen Street. And lastly, four buildings, which is known as the Halsted Willow Group, located at Eighteen Hundred North Halsted Street, Seventeen Thirty Two North Halsted Street, Seventeen Dash Twenty Seven through Seventeen Dash Twenty Nine North Halsted Street, and Seventeen Thirty Three North Halsted Street in the Second and Forty Third Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page fifteen contains one historical landmark fee waiver in the Fourth Ward located at Five Twenty Three through Five Twenty Nine South Plymouth Court. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Pages sixteen contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area, twenty four feet above grade. In the Fourth, Eighth, Eleventh, Twelfth, I'm sorry, Four, Eighth, Eleventh, Twenty Second, Twenty Seventh, Twenty Eighth, Thirty Eighth, Forty First, Forty Second, Forty Fourth, and Forty Fifth Wards, I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Rules, Chairman Harris.
Reporting for your Committee on Committees and Rules, which met on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, the committee recommends the following re-referrals. The committee recommends that item one be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. The item is Zero Two Zero Two One Dash Twelve Twenty Seven, amending the Municipal Code Chapters Nine through One Hundred and Nine through One Oh One to further regulate automatic speed enforcement.
and 9 through 101 to further regulate automatic speed enforcement system be re-referred to the Committee on Finance. I move approval of the recommendation this item this to be re-referred to the Committee on Finance by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Committee on Finance and Oversight, Committee on Finance.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Robirus and I move to defer and publish this item.
The matter will be deferred and published. Chairman Harris.
Item 2, 02021-2901, Amendment of the Municipal Code, Chapter 2-60, by adding the new section to 2-60-090 to establish the position of the Legislative Council. I move approval of the recommendation that Item 2 be re-referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Relations by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Robirus and I move to defer and publish this item.
The matter will be deferred and published.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Next up on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, matters on the agreed calendar. Chairman Harris.
Matters on agreed calendar. I've received from the Clerk, Anna Valencia, a total of 47 items proposed of the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tribulatory resolutions from the Clerk and the following Alderman. Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Burke, Alderman Brookens, Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Vegas, Alderman Miss, Alderman Nugent, Alderman Smith, and Alderman Tunney. I move approval of these by the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. New business, Madam Clerk. Please call the wards beginning with the 50th.
Claims, free permits, license, the exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance. Two committees haven't been called. The matters are referred to the Committee on Rules. Zoning amendments refer to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Two committees that haven't been called, the Committee on Traffic and the Committee on Budget. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Granted privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on Traffic. The matters are referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Exemption from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on Zoning. The matters are referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Haddon and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of year 2022 budget recommendation within appropriation code 0005, salaries and wages for Chicago Police Department, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Traffic. The matters are referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Haddon and others have proposed orders for amendment of year 2022 budget recommendations within Fund 9246, American Rescue Plan Investment Regarding SRO Preservation, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations and the Committee on Education. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Gardner has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as honorary presiding Paul Ready Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on Zoning. The matters refer to the Committee on Rules. Alderman Tunney has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 7-38-117, by removing mobile food vehicle stand at 817 West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety and the Committee on Zoning. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Tunney has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 9-64-206, by installing parking meters and regulating parking meter hours of operation on portions of West Addison Street, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. It's referred to the Committee on Traffic. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety and the Committee on Zoning. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Smith and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on combating gun violence, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Public Safety and the Committee on Traffic. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 10-40, by adding a new section, 10-40-255, regarding noise limitations on Chicago River, Ogden Slip, or within certain breakwater of Chicago Harbor, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on Zoning. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-232-070, to prohibit issuance or renewal of valley parking operator licenses for purposes providing valley parking services to business establishments holding tavern licenses, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on License to Consumer Protection and the Committee on Education. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package goods licenses on portions of West Grand Avenue and North Wall Street, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on License to Consumer Protection, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Riley also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for sign sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards and the Committee on Education. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vasquez has proposed ordinance for a vacation of public alleys in the area bounded by North Ridge Avenue, West Peterson Avenue, and North Ravenswood Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way and the Committee on Finance. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed resolution to call for fully funded ash tree inoculation program within 2022 budget recommendations, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, the Committee on Traffic Control and Safety. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vegas has proposed resolution to call for hearings on the Department of Assets, Information, and Services regarding current data sharing practices and tools and establishment of plans to impose and implement effective data sharing platforms, which is referred to the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Two committees haven't been called, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, and Education. The matters refer to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Vegas has proposed resolution to call for establishment of Latino Advisory Council Hispanic Inclusion Plan, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting, Oversight, and Equity. Alderman Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of year 2022 annual appropriation ordinance within Office of Public Safety Administration for Software Maintenance and Licensing, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of year 2022 annual appropriation ordinance within Department of Public Health regarding American Rescue Plan Investment and Mental Health Clinics, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Cardona has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at 4039 West Diversey Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-4-0503D, to classify portions of West Fulton Market, West Fulton Street, and West Randall Street as pedestrian streets, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett and Alderman Ramirez Rosa have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Section 17-6-0403F and G, regarding permitted by right and special use approval for eating and drinking establishments within planned development district numbers 14A and 4A and 14, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Aldama C. Lopez has proposed orders for amendment of the year 2022 budget recommendations within appropriation code 9200 for Department of Family and Support Services, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Aldama C. Lopez also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Roberto Bobby Herrera, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Aldama C. Lopez and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed ordinance for amendment of year 2022 recommendations within appropriation code 0152, Advertising for Chicago Police Department, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alderman Scott has proposed order for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-023, to allow additional package good licenses on portion of West 16th Street, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alderman Scott also has proposed ordinance for dedication of public ways and vacation of public alleys in the area bounded by South Spaulding Avenue, West 21st Street, South Sawyer Avenue, and the Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Brookens has proposed order for amendment of municipal code, Section 4-60-022, to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of West 87th Street, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alderman Brookens also has proposed ordinance for approval of Platte of David Herner Subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards at 125 West 87th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Cardenas has proposed resolution to call for the Department of Water Management to establish solutions to flooding and publish reports detailing known causes for persistent and repetitive flooding, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Thompson has proposed ordinance for approval of Platte of Riverside Subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sedlowski Garza and Alderman Ramirez Rosa have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, Title 6, by modifying various sections and adding new Section 6-100-010 and Section 6-100-030 regarding worker protections, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Sedlowski Garza and others have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Chapter 10-32, regarding permits, protection, replacement, and removal regulations for trees, plants, and shrubs, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Harris has proposed order for the issuance of a signed sign board at 9110 South Stony Allen Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Mitchell has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as Jerry Torrey Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Sawyer and Alderman Harrison have proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, Title 17, to further regulate cannabis business establishments, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Sawyer and others have proposed resolution to call for Department of Homeland Security, to provide full accounting of brutality inflicted on Haitian immigrants by U.S. Customs and Border Patrol, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alderman King has proposed ordinance for dedication of portions of South Vernon Avenue, East 30th Street, and South Cattle Grove Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman King also has proposed ordinance for vacation of portions of East 26th Street and East 27th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman King also has proposed ordinance for vacation of portions of public alleys in the area bounded by East 8th Street, South Michigan Avenue, East 9th Street, and South Wabash Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman King and Alderman Haddon have proposed resolution for reaffirmation of city of Chicago as sanctuary and welcoming city to black immigrants, especially Haitian immigrants, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Dow has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed sign boards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Espada has proposed ordinance for amendment of the year 2022 budget recommendations within Fund 9246, American Rescue Plan Investment Regarding Addiction Prevention Counseling, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. And Alderman Espada has proposed ordinance for amendment of the year 2022 budget recommendations within Fund 9246, American Rescue Investment Plan Regarding Reduced Lead and Drinking Water, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Your Honor, that concludes all the medical introductions.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of making a motion regarding referrals to the Rules Committee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, I'd like to move to re-refer all the items just sent to Rules Committee to their originally assigned committee.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Our rule state, if you send something to rules, it has to go to the Rules Committee. You cannot change the rules once again to suit yourself. There needs to be a Rules Committee. That is our procedure. It has been that way since the beginning of time, and we are once again changing the rules. That motion is totally out of order, and it is totally against our rules and regulations of this body.
Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Madam President, my colleague is correct that the rules would stipulate that is the process. However, this body voted to suspend the rules to allow for that motion, and that motion was approved. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Riley is correct. Under ordinary circumstances, once a matter, two committees being called, the matter is typically sent to Rules. But there was a duly motion to suspend that was granted without any objection, and there was a motion that was then made to re-refer all those items to their original intended committees, also granted without any objection. So your statement, I think, is incorrect. And if there was a motion, and I don't believe there was, it would be untimely, given the ruling on the unopposed motion brought by Alderman Riley. Next up. The Chair recognized first, Sir, Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to be recorded as voting yes on the first item in Finance Committee.
So reflected in a record. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The nays have it the motion for reconsideration fails. Next up, approval of the Journal, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal and move that it be approved.
All those in favor of approving the Journal signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Next up, unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Next up, miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, with regard to a Rule 41 notice previously filed with the clerk, I believe that as a result of proceedings early in this meeting, there is no outstanding miscellaneous business.
Alderman Mitchell, the date and time of the next meeting.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, Section One, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Monday, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at ten a.m. in the City Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. If prior to then there is determination that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, in accordance with Section Seventy of the Open Meetings Act, the next regular meeting of the City Council may be conducted by video conference in accordance with applicable law. Any such determination will be posted on the City Clerk's website along with an amended meeting agenda indicating that the meeting will be conducted by video conference by ten a.m. on Thursday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Section two, this order shall take an effect and be enforced from after its passage.
Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Roll call on the omnibus.
Alderman LaSpata. Alderman LaSpata is an aye. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Hopkins. Alderman Dow. Alderman Dow is an aye. Alderman King. Alderman Hairston. Alderman Hairston is an aye. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer is an aye. Alderman Mitchell.
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris. Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal. Alderman Salaski Garza. Alderman Salaski Garza is an aye. Alderman Thompson.
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardenas. Alderman Quinn.
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke. Alderman Burke is an aye. Alderman Lopez.
Aye.
Alderman Lopez is an aye. Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman is an aye. Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Moore is an aye. Alderman Curtis.
Aye.
Alderman Curtis is an aye. Alderman O'Shea.
Aye.
Alderman O'Shea is an aye. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor. Alderman Taylor is an aye. Alderman Brookins. Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is an aye. Alderman Tabarez. Alderman Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott.
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Cito Lopez. Alderman Cito Lopez is an aye. Alderman Maldonado.
Aye.
Alderman Maldonado is an aye. Alderman Burnett.
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin. Alderman Irvin. Aye. Alderman Irvin is an aye. Alderman Talafaro.
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Raboyas. Alderman Raboyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona.
Aye.
Alderman Cardona is an aye. Alderman Waguspack.
Aye.
Alderman Waguspack is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is an aye. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin. Alderman Austin.
Alderman.
Aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Always on.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa is an aye. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Mitts. Is it Viegas here? Okay, Alderman, Alderman Mitts.
Aye.
Alderman Mitts is an aye. Alderman Spassato.
Spassato.
Spassato is an aye. Alderman Nugent.
Hold on one second, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Nugent is an aye.
Madam Clerk, one second. Ladies and gentlemen, we are not finished with our business today. As is customary, we have a public hearing on our budget that's coming up. So I please ask you, keep your voices down, take your seats, we are not finished. Please proceed.
Alderman Vasquez. Alderman Vasquez is an aye. Alderman Napolitano.
Aye.
Alderman Napolitano is an aye. Alderman Riley.
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith. Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny.
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner.
Aye.
Alderman Gardner is an aye. Alderman Capelman. Alderman Capelman is an aye. Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Martin is an aye. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon.
Aye.
Alderman Haddon is an aye. Alderman Silverstein. Alderman Silverstein is an aye.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
No.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration is denied.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to go out of the regular order of business in order to conduct the public hearing on the proposed executive budget.
On the motion to go out of the regular order of business, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The time is now one forty-seven. The clerk will read the notice of the public hearing.
The following official notice of a public hearing on the budget document of the City of Chicago for the year twenty twenty-two was published in the Chicago Tribune on October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Public notice is hereby given that the executive budget of the City of Chicago for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, was submitted by the Honorable Lori Lightfoot Mayor to the City Council of the City of Chicago at a regular City Council meeting held on September twentieth, twenty twenty-first. It was filed with the Office of the City Clerk on September twentieth, twenty twenty-first. The budget document is the pamphlet form and available for inspection in the Office of the City Clerk and the Herald Washington Library Center of the City of Chicago. Public notice is hereby further given that a public hearing on the executive budget will be held on Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at twelve p.m. in the City Council Chamber in City Hall. Unless it's determined that a remote hearing is prudent due to COVID-19, instructions for both in-person and remote participation in the public hearing will be available at www.shycityclerk.com. If you require specific language accommodations, including ASL interpreting, please email office of New Americans at citychicago.org by October seventh, twenty twenty-one.
I've been provided with a list of individuals who sign up in advance to participate in this public hearing on the executive budget. Mr. Clerk, please call the witnesses.
All members of the public who wish to speak on testimony on the twenty twenty-two budget will speak from the second floor microphone, third floor microphone, apologies. Our first speaker is Melvin Bailey. Our next speaker is Nancy Wade. Our next speaker is Lydia Scott.
Lydia Scott is not here.
Ms. Scott.
Lydia Scott is not here.
Our next speaker is Jack Levin. Our next speaker is Adrian Alexander.
My name, hi, hi. My name is Jack Levin. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Levin.
My name is Jack Levin, President and CEO of the Chicagoland Chamber of Commerce, and we represent over one thousand diverse businesses from across, across the Chicagoland area. We'd like to thank the Mayor, Chairwoman Dow, and members of the City Council for the opportunity today to speak to you regarding the FY twenty-two budget proposal. Our members are the job creators for Chicago, and we are the voice of business in Chicagoland. The top concerns that I hear from our businesses for economic recovery are public safety and skyrocketing property taxes. So first, we commend the Mayor for introducing and crafting many of the new programs and investments that are addressing public safety. Investments in youth employment, mental health and wellness, violence prevention organizations, and the elimination of vacant lots. These are long-term investments to improve public safety. We are also strongly supportive of the Mayor's one hundred ninety million in increased funding to the Chicago Police Department. Increasing gun violence and crime are tearing families and communities apart and is having a significant impact on our economic recovery. We urge the Mayor and this body to do everything in their power to ensure that almost one thousand vacancies in the police force are filled as quickly as possible to create a stronger public safety presence deployed throughout the city. The other daily concern I hear from our members has to do with the high property tax burden. In a year where the commercial properties in the City of Chicago are witnessing skyrocketing assessment increases coming out of the Cook County Assessor's Office and dealing with the pandemic, this increase in the levy will be a double whammy. Small businesses in every commercial corridor are seeing assessment increases of well over a hundred percent in many cases and will be unable to pay the property tax bills next summer. Lastly, no sectors have been more impacted by this lagging pandemic economy than the hospitality, restaurant, and tourism industries. These industries need direct support such as the Hotel Jobs Recovery Plan for seventy-five million, with eighty percent going to workers, licensing relief and continued and expanded outdoor dining for restaurants, convention incentive dollars to cover the additional costs due to the pandemic, and other forms of small business relief. In closing, we urge the members of this body to stand up for small businesses and those industries most impacted by the pandemic and craft a budget that does not contain an increase in the city's property tax levy to help both businesses and residents, especially an increase that includes a twenty-two point nine million inflationary levy increase. Let's put this CPI increase on hold for two years. It should also include real direct relief to the ailing hospitality and tourism industry, and it should prioritize an immediate response to the ever-growing public safety crisis. As the voice for Chicago's business community, we stand ready to work with Mayor Lightfoot and the City Council to create a budget that will foster economic growth and get our residents back to work and keep our residents, workers, and businesses safe. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Levin, for your comments. Our next speaker is Adrian Alexander.
Good afternoon. My name is Adrian Alexander. I'm the Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for ASME Council Thirty-One. ASME represents almost four thousand city employees in every single city department. We're pleased to be here today, not discussing layoffs, but how to spend much-needed federal funds that are ensuring that our members can continue providing the critical city services so many residents rely on. I wanted to bring two longstanding issues to your attention, as I think we're uniquely situated to make progress on them this year. The first is the issue of civilianization and policing. Many administrations have attempted to tackle this issue, and we are hopeful when the Office of Public Safety Administration was created. It's clear from both PSA and the Police Department hearings that there is much work to be done on this front, however. And from the discussion amongst Aldermen, it seems this year, when there are concerns about getting enough foreign officers through the academy, hiring civilians to do the work entitled they are already cleared for would make both fiscal and common sense. To that end, we propose the following. The CPD create clear criteria for why any positions that civilians can work in would stay in their department. If a foreign officer is in a CPD or PSA position that a civilian can work in, there are quarterly check-ins to ensure there's still a valid reason they are doing that work, and that there are quarterly reports to the Committee on Public Safety, so there's transparency around progress on this issue. Lastly, I wanted to talk about something I've spoken to many of you about over the years, public mental health services. Our CDPH clinics are the safety net where community members can receive free, long-term, trauma-informed care without waiting lists or treatment limits. This makes our city-run clinics a gem at a time when so many people are having a hard time accessing care, and yet the plan you have before you allocates a hundred percent of new federal funding to the private sector. We believe the public clinics should be the centerpiece of any framework for mental health. Hundreds of thousands of Chicagoland need mental health services, and instead of truly promoting CDPH clinic services, expanding clinical capacity of the public system, and exploring the establishment of new clinical spaces and community settings with the greatest needs, we're spending twenty million to fund an unknown number of delegate agencies with little accountability. By comparison, the total investment in running the city's five mental health clinics is sixteen million. We hope that you will reconsider some of the money being outsourced and invest in connecting the many people with unmet needs to the remaining CDPH clinics. We look forward to working with you all both on these issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for your comments. Our next speaker is Pat Dior.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. That last thirty minutes of your meeting is certainly a tough act to follow, but I will try. I am appearing today on behalf of the Hospitality Business Association of Chicago, a chamber of locally-owned, independent hospitality businesses across Chicago, and our great concerns with the twenty twenty-two City of Chicago budget, which, I will note, was largely only introduced a few hours ago at the start of this meeting, and nobody could possibly have a chance to read before the statutorily required public hearing, never mind address the many issues with it in only three minutes. Nevertheless, I will try. This budget provides nothing in direct assistance to your favorite locally-owned bars and restaurants in the City of Chicago. In fact, this budget seems poised to spend more on trees than it is going to spend helping locally-owned small businesses. This is particularly egregious because although the Department of Budget Office insists that over a hundred and seventy million in local relief has been granted, that was largely loans, and they have yet to itemize where it went. Also, members of City Hall Administration will point out that there has been ample PPP and Restaurant Revitalization Fund directed to these industries. Where to begin? The Restaurant Revitalization Fund ran out of money, and went two-thirds of your favorite locally-owned bars and restaurants still had yet to receive any money, including veteran and minority-owned businesses who had their initial approved grants clawed back after lawsuits in other states. PPP and the Restaurant Revitalization Fund do not compensate these businesses for revenue they have lost, while rent and property tax costs continue to accrue this year. There is an urgent need for these businesses to get additional direct American Rescue Plan relief from this city's budget, and I urge the City Council to redirect this budget's proposed forty million dollars in nebulous commercial corridor improvements and twenty million dollars in marketing for D case, an agency, a department that has never run a large-scale national advertising campaign, and direct that sixty-five million dollars in new direct assistance to locally-owned small businesses, prioritizing the vital hospitality industry and those small businesses that have received no Restaurant Revitalization Fund money, and probably, in some cases, no PPP money. I could go on with facts and figures showing how bad the revenue loss is, but my time is also up because three minutes is not enough to address these issues. Please fund your local hospitality industry, members of the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Dior, for your comments. Our next speaker is Lydia Scott. Ms. Scott, are you here?
Lydia Scott is not here.
Our next speaker is Melvin Bailey. Our next speaker is Nancy Wade. Our next speaker is Lawrence Massal.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lightfoot, Chairman Dow, and members of the City Council. I am Lawrence Massal, and I serve as the President of the Civic Federation, a hundred and twenty-seven-year-old government research organization based in Chicago. Our members represent the major corporations, institutions, and service firms. Thank you for this opportunity to provide the Civic Federation's perspective on the proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget. A full copy of our seventy-four-page analysis has been mailed to, emailed to all of the Aldermen, Alderpersons, and budget staff this morning, and is also publicly available for free on our website at civicfed.org. The Civic Federation is pleased to provide overall support for the proposed ten-point-six billion-dollar spending plan. The city is in much better financial position now than it was a year ago. Much of this is a result of the federal COVID-19 relief funding, which has allowed the city to continue to operate at full service levels and invest in new programs and infrastructure. The use of these significant one-time funds for significant one-time expenses, namely closing budget gaps caused by factors outside the control of city officials, we believe is prudent and is best practice. As you may recall, the Civic Federation, along with many groups, encouraged our federal officials to provide such funding, and we are pleased to see that the city is able to use these funds to its advantage in the short term. However, the Civic Federation remains concerned about the unsustainability of the City of Chicago's financial position in future years, including debt and our ever-growing pension obligations, which continue to loom over the city's ability to balance its budget. Pension funding in future years, which is predicated on the notoriously unreliable gambling revenues. And while the Federation shares the city and mayor and the administration's optimism on reopening, including a return to a robust economic recovery, none of us can accurately predict the future of the pandemic and the potential economic disruption. With the breathing room provided by these federal stimulus funds, there's an opportunity to set Chicago on a much better fiscal path. First, the city must work to develop a long-term plan that details how city officials will balance the budget if the recovery falls short of expectations. Rather than turning only to revenues, this plan must also include structural changes to move the city forward. Additionally, the four pension funds must have solid plans for their future funding. While-
Ask Mr., would it be okay if Mr. Massal would continue his remarks? I'd be interested in what he can, has to continue to say.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Mr. Massal, you may continue your testimony.
Very much. I'll just, I'll just take a minute. While jumps in the future will not, in the pension funds, will not be as large as in recent years, the costs and obligations will continue to grow. And without the ability to change benefits, the city is obligated by state law to find a way to fund them at their current levels. It remains unclear to the Federation how the statutorily required payments will be paid if the Chicago economy does not fully bounce back, and if there are any unforeseen disruptions. Our full report includes a much more detail about the aspects of the budget that we support, along with additional recommendations. Time will not allow me to cover them all, so I encourage you to review the full report and follow up with me or my staff at your convenience. Thank you for this opportunity. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Massal, for your comments. Your Honor, no other speakers have signed up to speak on the 2022 city budget.
Given that there are no further speakers who have timely requested to participate during this public hearing, the time is now 2:05. This concludes a public hearing on the proposed executive budget. The Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to return to the regular order of business.
All those in favor of returning to the regular order of business signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. The motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to adjourn.
I'm being funny by holding up a little bit. There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed say no. The motion is carried. The council meeting for today is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.